The March 13th, 2025 Des Moines City Council meeting is now called to order. Councilmember Oxager will now lead us in the pledge. Please stand if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, to all the public here, thank you for joining us tonight. Appreciate your being here on this, who knows if it's sunny or storming out right now. It seems to change every 10 minutes today. So, thanks for being here. Those who are watching on Channel 21, please know that we can't attend to our phones from the dais, but if you experience any technical problems while watching online, please feel free to call cityclerk@desmoinewa.gov. Or no, that's a write. Please write to cityclerk@desmoinewa.gov. Let the record show that six council members are present in person and Councilmember Nutting is attending by phone. Do we have any correspondence not previously received by council?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. So now it is time for comments from the public, and we ask that as you come to the podium, please keep your comments respectful and recognize that any person who is speaking or acting in a disruptive manner will be asked to leave the meeting. You'll have three minutes to speak, except for those that are, I think there, we have one or two presentations that are from an organization. Those will have five minutes. Please state your name and your city of residence when you come to the podium. So first up, we have Ted, oh, do we have a presentation that we want to go first, or is it?
Well, you can hold those until, if it's for the Six Gill.
For the, and the, and the Yacht Club as well. Okay, we'll do that. All right, first up is Ted Teppo.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, and any other staff or community members who are here. My name is Ted Teppo, and I am here as a representative of the Des Moines Memorial Drive Preservation Association. Our mission is to honor those who died in World War I by advocating for the preservation and the maintenance of Des Moines Memorial Drive as a unique living monument. Our committee members, there are two others here tonight, and others that are not here, have developed a storyboard timeline concerning the history, the background, and development of the drive as a memorial, which was done to honor locals who were lost in the World War I conflict. I'm here tonight to ask for your support in approving the Triangle Project, including our timeline that is to be used as part of the interpretive signage at the site. Our group is very thankful for the opportunity to participate and further the story of those lost, and continue to advocate for the continued development of the drive. Thank you for allowing us to voice our support for the project.
Thank you. Next up, we have Randy Williams.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and the rest of our illustrious council. I appreciate the opportunity. Like a lot of us here tonight, I'm here to talk Six Gill Sharks, and why we want to get those little critters declared in this area as a six-gill sight of the world. We'll settle for Des Moines, but we don't appeal to Sound. But yeah, it's a wonderful animal. I've been diving for 56 years myself, scientific, coast guard diver, all that stuff. I tell you, it's one of the most beautiful things to see underwater, and Russ will be showing some goodies here tonight as well. And I'd like to thank all the divers and all of our folks here tonight. We really enjoyed that encounter to see something so incredible as a six-gill shark. The fact that we've got him right here in Redondo in the summertime, it's amazing. It is cool. So, we're hoping we can get a participation, and Des Moines will declare it, and we can get Des Moines declared as this capital for six-gill sharks. Give it a shot. All right, and the sharks will appreciate it, too. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, Randy. Jess Alexanderson.
She goes by Scuba Jess.
Oh, Scuba Jess.
Hi, everybody. Thanks to the mayor and everybody here for having us divers invade your situation. This is great. We just wanted to raise awareness of the magical six-gill sharks that we have here right in our backyard, and just bring awareness of how amazing they are and help protect them. Unfortunately, some of them have been fished out in past years, and it's just terrible because they are just amazing sea creatures, and our oceans just really need our help and our love. And if we can just educate the community about what we have, and not only the six-gill sharks, but all the other amazing sea creatures that live down there, Pacific's funny lump suckers, we have wolf seals, we have rockfish that need our help. They all need our help, and unfortunately, there's like a lot of litter in the area, and like the whole state of Washington. And I know this is about saving the sharks, but all of that litter, if nobody picks it up, a lot of it unfortunately ends up in the oceans. So, if we can bring awareness to that, to just ways we can help our sea creatures, I think it'd be great. So, yeah, thanks for the time. Oh, and there's new, well, no, we'll talk about that later anyways.
Go sharks!
Yeah, I do, I am enjoying your dress. It's a little reminiscent of Ms. Frizzle. Next up, Natalie Anderson.
Hi, thank you, everybody. My name's Natalie Anderson. I live in Seattle, and I dive in Des Moines pretty much every week. This is a really special place. This is one of the only places in the world you can see six-gill sharks, which are primarily a deep-water shark, at recreational depths. I don't have a whole lot to say, except, you know, we tend to protect what we, what we love, and if we raise awareness of the six-gill sharks, and how special it is that we can actually see those here, I think, you know, people would be less inclined to see them as annoying bycatch. You know, we'd work a little harder to protect our waterways. I just want to spread information about them because they're super unique, and it's, it's just an incredible experience to be able to see them, and that's all.
Thank you. So, I do notice that quite a few visitors tonight. Is there anybody who came tonight expecting or hoping to speak but didn't realize you needed to sign in? Okay, all right. I'll pass that back to you. Okay, next up, we have our committee chair reports, and we're going to begin with a report out regarding the Transportation Committee with Chair Mahoney.
Thank you, Mayor. We met tonight at, or today at four. Seems like it's already been a few hours, which it has. But we basically went over our TIP projects that are in the capital improvement project list. 24th was the biggest conversation. There's going to be a presentation tonight, so I'm not going to go into anymore, but I will say that our staffs work really hard to find solutions and be positive with a lot of twists and turns. And then, of course, we talked about the Barnes Creek Trail, and some of the updates there that they're trying to do, the Marina Steps, got an update on that, and the Redondo Pier, and the bathrooms. Just one note that was brought up was that there'll be a closure in Redondo, but they're going to be putting in the new sidewalk that has to be concrete. So they're going to close from Friday at 9:00 a.m. through Sunday of this week, and it's obviously going to have people have to reroute and detour as they can. But I put it this way, it's a short-term pain for a long-term gain. So, it'll be, it'll be worth it. So anyway, that's all I, one more thing. PSRC Transportation Policy Board met today, and really, the biggest thing is, we went over several things, but the biggest concern, obviously, is where the federal dollars, are they going to come, or are they not going to come? I can sum it up very easily by saying that much, because it's, it's really the unknown of anything we're going to go forward with. But there was a lot of support for passenger ferries in the conversation as well.
Thank you. Next up, a report out from the Environment Committee, which met this afternoon with, from Chair Harris.
Thank you. And we had a couple items, and we had a fairly routine review of the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, and they spelt it out just for me, because normally we call it NPDES. And I am very pleased to hear that the, basically, you know, it sounds like more requirements, but we're, we're expanding what our group does into tree canopy. There is a lot more interest in incorporating trees on wetlands that are part of our water system, and this makes me very happy, because what I've heard over and over again regarding Port of Seattle property, King County basins, and so forth, is that professional management of forest and wetlands is, it is wonderful to have volunteer groups, but professional management is far more efficient in terms of environmental uplift. So this is just really good news, and we also had a review of our stormwater management program plan, and a lot of that has to do with public engagement, and we're going to keep trying to find ways to get more people involved. The Environment Committee does a tremendous amount of work for, great work for the public, and I sort of make little jokes, but it's just getting people to appreciate that and make it into something, you know, of greater interest to kids and so forth is something we're really working on. I'm just going to take one minute, if you don't, because people from the public sometimes leave. The Des Moines Memorial Drive Preservation Association has a website which talks about the-
Can you save that for the presentation?
Oh, well, I have an opportunity, okay, good. I just, livinroadofremembrance.com in case anybody leaves. I also was, I'm a member of the Emergency Management Advisory Committee, and are kind of now our sole member in South King County. And I just wanted to mention briefly, they, we had this bomb cyclone last November, which was a lot more significant in the north and east side of the county, and they activated their emergency operations center. It was a big, all-hands-on-deck kind of a deal, and I just wanted to note something for us. They did something low-dollar and very brilliant, in my opinion. They activated warming centers and so forth, and they did something else, because they have a big Generac batteries and so forth. They set up rows of charging stations for people's phones. And I, that sounds like a small thing, but I remember the last time since I've lived here, we've had like two big power outages that have lasted four and five days. Back then, people were not as utterly dependent on cellphones as they are now, and it cost them almost nothing, but they had hundreds and hundreds of people every day coming in to charge their phones. And it's something for us to think about, because if we lose power for four or five days, you know, not being able to charge your phone is going to be a real thing for people. So, you know, just something to think, put in the backpocket for the future. That's it.
Thank you. We also have a report out from the Public Issues Committee with Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Public Issues Committee is a committee of Sound Cities Association, which is 38 cities throughout King County, who have kind of come together to balance out the two 800-pound gorillas around here, the county government and Seattle. And so, we have a lot of the big issues that are going to be presented to the county come before that committee. And the big issue last night was the, King County is asking to renew the parks levy, and it's a $1.5 billion ask. As pointed out, this is a really huge, the park system in King County, as they operated, I want to say 33,000 acres or something like that, it was an enormous amount, and they're going to be asking people to renew that levy, but at a higher amount than they have. Currently, you're paying about 19.54 cents per $1,000 of assessed value of your house, and that will go up to approximately 22 cents. And then, what that means is that a home that is the median in value in King County, which is $844,000, will be paying approximately 17, $17.8 per month towards parks. There were a number of questions, a lot of people were asking at the city representatives, trying to get a little more money, this was a little, a little better understanding of where the money was going, how it was being spent, how it was being allocated. Some of the major points were that they're concerned that the allocation of money between Seattle and the rest of the county really wasn't striking people as very fair, because it was only 18%, 8% that was guaranteed to be allocated to cities outside of Seattle. One of the other issues that people raised is tax fatigue. I mean, we're, I see a head nod there. You know, it's, there used to be a theory that if people knew what they were paying for, where their tax dollars were going, they'd be more inclined than just having a big, one big property tax bill. That and several other factors kind of led to a shift. So now, we have levies for everything, property tax levies for everything. But now, it feels like people are getting nickel and dime, and I think that this could be an issue in trying to raise the money, and it was raised at that. So, the, talking to the Parks and Rec people, they are advising everybody to contact their county council members and sort of weigh in on this levy and what it's going to look like. They're aiming to put it on the August ballot, and if you're concerned about it, I think everybody does generally support taxes and trail, or parks and trails throughout the county, and is willing to spend some money on it. But the question really is, how much? And how big an increase are you willing to eat, and how is that money going to get distributed? So, I'd urge everybody to contact their county council member about that. So, thank you.
And ours is?
Our-
Deshaun Quinn.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yes, I, we, our county council, yes, our King County council member is Deshaun Quinn, and he was recently appointed to fill the position that Dave Up the Grove left when he got elected to Public Lands Commissioner. So, but you can look up Deshaun Quinn, or look up King County Council, and that's who you're looking for, it's District Five. So, thank you.
Thank you. So, we also had a Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee meeting last week, and we, a few things that we were, had a briefing about a few items. The substation that we've got up in the shopping mall up on 272nd, where the Safeway is, that we've had a substation there for a handful of years, and that will be closing to, due to budget constraints, and so they're just about moved out of that. There are cameras, our body-worn cameras are being upgraded, and it's pretty amazing, all the expenses that were incurred as a result of that whole transfer over are being paid for by grants, and then Motorola has an extended warranty on the cameras that we didn't have before, and including all of our digital storage. It's pretty amazing, the deal that they got with Motorola, Motorola with these cameras. So, I told the chief, next time I buy another house, I want him to negotiate for me. So, they did, they did a great job. So, really happy about that. We, we received some crime stats. There's a big decrease in auto thefts as a result of the recent legislation, and, but there's also increases in alcohol and drug offenses. So that is a concern. Always working ways to address that. South King Fire also gave us a really great presentation during the meeting, and just a couple data points, they received 27,000 calls last year. There's a 50% increase in calls in the last few years, and they're doing great work. Sure appreciate all of them, that big team serving us. That's all I have for that. All right, moving on to the city manager's report, I'm going to hand the baton over to City Manager Catherine Cafrey.
Mayor and council, we have a couple of presentations tonight, but we'll start with Commodore Peggy Clark, if I'm saying that right, and she is going to give an update on the Des Moines Yacht Club.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city staff, and residents. I'm the Commodore of the Des Moines Yacht Club. Thank you for the opportunity to give you an update tonight on the events of the 2025 boating season. As many of you may know, our club has been a member of this community since 1957, and we have over 300 members who are often, who are community members as well. And they are located on our original property between Anthony's and Massey Creek. Our mission advocates safe boating, enabling the access to water, family boating, and Des Moines Yacht Club, whose name is reflected in our, as our homeport, shares goodwill in events all around the Puget Sound with other boat clubs in the community. We look forward to an eventful year in 2025. We are committed to supporting our members, providing leadership in the boating community, and continuing our community engagement by our club members in Des Moines. We have always made efforts to contribute to the betterment of the local community, and last year's contributions provided more than $4,500 to a variety of organizations, including Dollars for Scholars, the Des Moines Area Food Bank, SR3, and Legacy Foundation. This year, we'll provide four scholarships, $1,000 each, to Mount Rainier High School students. Regarding our events this year, the lineup is as follows. Start to speed read a little bit here. May 15th, March 15th, we will hold our 26th Annual Marine Swap Meet, which will bring hundreds of boaters from around the sound to Des Moines as they shop for some incredible bargains. The First Mates raise funds for local scholarships and nonprofit organizations through their treasure table and food sales. April 19th is the Daffodil Boat Parade, sponsored by the Tacoma Yacht Club, with the theme Boating Locally. We have participated in this event for years, and with a decorated boat, and we always do a great job of representing not only our yacht club, but the city. Last year, we were recognized at this event with awards, three awards. Third place in the themed boat category, we were winner of the Commodore's Perpetual Award, and we also won Most Spirited. May 14th, the Yacht Club will again host the Gathering for Dollars for Scholars, an award event for outstanding Mount Rainier High School students. Our members support this program through our Navigating the Future Scholarship Funds. Since 2008, we have funded 54 scholarships to a total of $50,000. We have a growing scholarship fund that can support this program into the future. This brings me to one of the important reasons I'm here tonight, and that is, May 10th, we have our South Sound Opening Day for Boating. Our theme for the casual part of this event is Pirates of the South Sound. So, we, and we'll send invitations to you all shortly. Please join us under the Jolly Roger for a fun-filled weekend. As you may recall, the Saturday afternoon formal ceremony begins at 3:00 and is open to the public. We are planning the usual fanfare with a flag ceremony, the reading of the city proclamation, and we'll be closing with the blessing of the fleet. Thank you, Mayor, and all the past mayors, for your participation in this event. As we have done for many past years, we'll focus on bringing many visiting yacht clubs to our area by sea. Our objective there is to demonstrate that Des Moines is a great housing, housing, boating destination. That, too, though. And we are working closely with SCOT and the marina staff to pack public marina with visiting boats. And I'll be back to the council meeting in April to hear the proclamation read and to the record. This is an event that is a reason to come to Des Moines, and should provide our community merchants with some, with some business. July 4th, we're hoping for that lovely lighted drones show. Again, you may see Des Moines Yacht Club boats in the marina. July 18th through 20th, we'll be participating in the Des Moines Waterland Celebration and the parade, also supporting the gathering of the classic wooden boats in the marina, and delivering another 100 wooden hydroplanes for the kids' activities. June, July, and August, we will, along with everyone else, be enjoying the marina, the waterfront activities, such as the Saturday Market, music in the park, et cetera. There are more plans for the fall and holiday seasons. We are continuing our lighted boat parade by partnering with the boating organizations and tenants in the marina. Of course, this is weather-dependent, and I will return to talk about those activities later in the year. We are contributing part of this community, and we promote this city as a great water destination wherever we go. We are proud to call Des Moines our homeport, and in closing, please know that we appreciate your efforts in leading our city, and, and the emphasis you are all applying to the marina redevelopment. The community is enjoying the north parking lot and the beautiful promenade, and now, we will finally have dock replacement beginning. So, congratulations on the work well done there, and thank you for the opportunity to provide you an update. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you. Councilmember Mahoney.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you. You've participated in the parade and provided boats for, for years now, as we try to move and get that waterland theme. As somebody that's been one of the parts of organizing it, we've always appreciated your help. With that said, and by the way, the spirit thing, yeah, I've been to some of your functions, I get that. But the Deputy Mayor and I would love a chance, a date in the near future, to make a couple of asks of you again for this year's parade. There are some things that are in change and flux that we'd like to talk to you about, that we think you can help us with. If you were going to get to that, sorry, I spoiled your thunder.
Anything else?
No, that was it. It was-
I'm just, just, Councilmember Nutting, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thanks. Thanks, Peggy. All right.
The next item is, we have Ross Freeman and Teri Sullivan here, from the Office of the County Executive, from the Climate Action Area. There is an item later on on the council's agenda to consider the city joining the K4C group. They are here to give a brief presentation on what this group is ahead of that item later on in the meeting.
Thank you very much, Mayor and council, for having us tonight, and we appreciate the invitation to speak about the K4C, which we, that's the acronym we use for the King County Cities Climate Collaboration. You'll see the logo down at the bottom there. And tonight, myself, Ross Freeman, and Teri Sullivan will be delivering a little bit of information about sort of the value proposition of joining the K4C, what's in it for your city and your community, and how we can add resources to your climate work. And do I advance the slides, or do you? Oh, they have the clicker here. Okay, let's see if we can get that going. Where do I point that? Okay, gone to sleep. Nope, okay, go ahead. Thank you. So, just a quick overview of what the K4C is here. Founded in 2012, it's a partnership of many different sizes of local government around the region. You'll see the map depicting who's involved now. These communities currently represent 86% of the county's population, and are really spread across from small to large over most of the county. We are always interested in recruiting additional members, and that's why we're here tonight to speak to, to your council about this opportunity. Next slide, great. And just a little bit about the basics of what is this institution. This is set up with inter-local agreement, an ILA. It's a voluntary but formal partnerships between local governments. What we're doing is working together to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, prepare for climate impacts, provide for health of residents. Ex- Examples of the kind of work we collaborate on, climate planning, green building, preparing for climate impacts, green energy, transportation issues, and we'll get into some of these just at the end of the presentation. And just at the bottom there are some example benefits we'll also touch on later. These range from toolkits to outreach materials, advocacy, support for wind bills in Olympia, coordination on grants, and especially funding opportunities is of great interest now to many of our partners. Next slide. So what does the K4C ILA look like? On the left there, you'll see a number of bullets just sort of defining what's in there. It establishes the governance structure. There's a small annual dues requested of each participant for this community. That would be in the $1,200 bracket. And then those dues are used each year to fund collaborative projects that benefit all of the participating partners. And we'll see those in the next couple of slides. So what does it look like to join? Everybody is welcome. We've recruited 2021 of the 39 cities in King County so far. It often begins with conversations with your electeds and with city managers. We have done that. And then there is often a presentation to council, as we are doing tonight. We invite council members to speak with their peer cities, of course, that are already members. There's great information to be had there. The, if council approves, there is a resolution to execute the ILA. That's in the packet tonight. And then we have an optional but recommended additional component that we would recommend, you know, visiting later, and this is the Joint Climate Action Commitments, which lays out sort of the founding issues and principles that we're all working towards. And then after that, it's just designating a staff member and elected that can attend the relevant meetings and participate in the process. Next slide. So just a quick overview on logistics, there is Executive Constantine there at the most recent elected official work session. So I'll start with that. Once a year, we have an annual event where electeds from all of our participating communities attend and discuss issues of the day. Often, there's a recap of what's happened in Olympia or a tee-up of what's coming. And on a monthly basis, for electeds that wish to be more involved, Terry here and our director lead what we call the Elected Outreach Committee for those who want to be more engaged. On the staff side, the upper paragraph there, we have a monthly meeting series where attendees are learning about emerging opportunities, toolkits, funding. There's guest presentations. We assist with access to state allocated funds, formula funding, and then we vote on on shared projects we all wish to fund together. Next slide. So the benefits, you may have gathered this already, but you know, collective action here is the name of the game with this process, and we feel we can especially bring a lot of value to smaller governments around the region that often only have perhaps part of one staff member who's working on these issues. And we can provide a lot of capacity, especially you'll often find that there's other cities going through the same issues or working on the same projects or working on the same kinds of campaigns, like a rooftop solar or electric vehicle chargers or green building initiatives. Somebody else is doing it, too, and we are very keen to connect you with collaborators. Next slide. So this will conclude my slides here, and Terry will go through two more at the end. These are the kind of aspects that we can provide through those dues that I mentioned earlier. You know, for communities that are developing their first climate action plan, we have a toolkit that helps walk through the process, so you don't have to reinvent the wheel. We have missions inventories that some communities are often keen to buy into so that they don't need to fund their own. We offer model language often, most recently for comp plan updates. We have technical support from consultants. And then we do also run some of our own campaigns. One of those is a home electrification campaign that switches on Washington and a number of other resources there at the end. So with that, I'll pass it over to Terry, who can just summarize some of the aspects that are especially relevant to your community here.
Yeah, and so the last slide that Ross just went through kind of is sort of what we all contribute our dues to. And as you saw, the dues are pretty minimal. We collect that across the 21 partner cities and then invest in something that's a shared product that's just more efficient. But moving forward, at least the last few years and moving forward, access to funding is probably the main benefit of joining the K4C. There's an increasing number of maybe less federal grants these days, but state grants through the Climate Commitment Act that we as K4C members are often partnering on to deliver a grant proposal to. A couple of examples of that in the last year, we recently secured $6 million in the King County Climate Office to distribute HEPA filters across South King County. We're working with our Public Health Department to do that. That is happening now in Des Moines, regardless of whether or not you join the K4C. But oftentimes, joining and having staff present at these monthly meetings just increases awareness of and access to these types of opportunities. Similarly, we recently launched a heat pump program in the region in unincorporated King County, but are looking to expand that into South King County. That comes from Department of Commerce funding that is grant formula funding. So just being ready as a community to join us and or other cities in the region to pursue those funds is is really a key aspect of this collaboration. Next slide, just to wrap things up here. Similarly, King County, in our climate office, we run countywide initiatives. That's having staff members present at these monthly meetings just gives a little bit more awareness of these opportunities, smaller grant programs. Ross runs an EV charging grant program. And so just having that staff member available for us to connect with and partner with really does result in increasing funding opportunities for your community on climate. These are a few examples, but but there are many more. And we're recently received a large number of grants in King County and are looking to deploy programs across the region. And so just having that person that we can connect with, get these opportunities out to your community is always helpful. That's kind of the the pitch we've got, and so we can take questions if anyone has them.
Any questions? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Um, Des Moines is kind of unique because we have the only Marina in the South, South King County. And we're looking at trying to electrify and trying to be one of the first in the sound, actually, that can support electric boats, which are coming, you know, certainly within the next five years, and also possibly electrified ferries. How would that fit in with this?
I'm not sure exactly how that would fit into this, but having, you know, your your staff member available to connect if we're, if you're interested in pursuing a grant that needs some support from our team. If you have staff members who are reaching out to King County Metro and looking to partner and and connect on opportunities, I think just it just increases that connection. But I'm not sure we have a specific kind of initiative related to the ferries, but.
Yeah, we, I'll, I'll add into that, Deputy Mayor, that, so yeah, we don't have an electrified ferry initiative in the climate office or in K4C at this time. But as Terry mentioned, I'm our EV program manager for the climate office, and so I do spend a lot of time connecting with peers and colleagues and maintaining awareness of what the funding opportunities are that are coming down the pipeline and working a lot on public charging. And I know that that's been of interest here in this community and that you've secured some funding to do so. So congratulations for that. That is an example of a situation where we actually brought a lot of communities in under our umbrella to apply for state funds to get EV charging. And the next time that the Department of Commerce opens up that funding opportunity, which we think is this summer, we will try to bring others along under the umbrella again, where we we handle the hassle and the admin and the paperwork and encourage as many people to apply as possible. So it could be that there they have a broader search image for what kind of charging they're looking for in that grant. We don't know the details yet.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nutting, do you have any questions?
Yeah, my only question is, is if it's a slight cost or a minimal cost, what what exactly is the cost, be a part?
Thank you. I can speak to that. And we will, of course, you now have these slides, so you can refer to them. There is a couple of different size categories based on the population of the city, and for this community, it falls into the $1,200 a year annual dues band, and I expect you'll stay in that category for quite a while.
All right. Any, any other questions? Councilmember?
No, I'm good.
Okay, good. All right. Well, great presentation. Thank you, guys, for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And then we'll take the item up later on your agenda. Our last item, without further ado, is the Six Gill Shark presentation. So Russ Higbee's here to take it away. And I've been told the the clicker thing does work, except to make sure it's on.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, staff, and thank you, guests. I'd like to start with a video of a six-gill that was actually taken by one of the the public speakers. This was filmed at Redondo, and this is one of the reasons why these animals are just amazing. And and if you have the chance to see them, please. While this goes on, you'll hear people diving Redondo. You can kind of get, you have heard bad visibility, murky water, you can kind of get an idea of this is kind of normal conditions for us down there. A seven to eight-foot shark is going to weigh about 500 pounds. So. One of the interesting features you'll notice, so obviously, this is called a six-gill shark. Most sharks are five gills. There are six, and there's also seven as well. So and then if you notice, it doesn't have the big dorsal fin that you may think a shark is having, because this is a deep, slow-water, slow-moving shark. It doesn't need that stability. So, yeah. All right. So, oops. So, big picture in terms of, ooh, my numbering went weird, and for the, for the city, is make Des Moines, Washington, the six-gill shark capital of the world. Make July 6th Six Gill Shark Day as a city, and that we can actually apply for National Six Gill Shark Day, and national days are basically like 50 bucks and a letter sort of thing. It's, it's, there's not a lot of teeth in that, if you can imagine. Why July 6th? It builds on existing events. Shark Week, probably all of you have heard of, is for this, for 2025, is July 6th to 13th, usually the second week-ish in July. Shark Awareness Day is July 14th, and Shark Month is July 6th. The third idea is rename Sixth Avenue, which you can see boxed in on the picture on the right-hand side, as Six Gill Shark Avenue or some version of that. Obviously, the naming would be an honorary commemorative sort of idea. So a little bit of kind of where we're going. So the vision, as the six-gill shark capital of the world, Des Moines, Washington, and South King County would become a focus for re enthusiasts, tourists, and researchers drawn to experience its unique residence, environments, and opportunities. So vision aligns with the city's strong identity as a waterfront destination, including plans for future development, its reputation as a premier dive location, and strategic partnerships with Highland College, their Mass Center Aquarium, SR3 Maritime High School, as well as other community partners. So. Am I going backwards? Will you help me? So further ideas, these would not necessarily be the the city council, but other ways we could go with this. Create some kind of educational infographic sign that would be placed at both Redondo and the Marina, similar to the Whale Trail, which is the far-right picture signage. And in the upper right corner is actually a draft of that, that one of our local divers and amazing graphic designer is has been working on. Celebrate unveiling on July 6th, which is a Sunday this year. Other ideas, could we participate in the waterland parade float with some kind of shark theme? Have parallel programming, programming similar to the Squidorama event that happens in the fall with the city, with library and and a couple other partners, Art Commission. Link to displays and programs at the Mass Center Aquarium, potentially a 24/7 underwater camera at Redondo, and then swag that maybe could be sold by local businesses. So a little bit about the sharks. So Redondo is literally the best place in the world to see them. They are here late spring to early fall. These are a deep-water shark species that are rarely seen, except by scuba divers at Redondo. Something is interesting at Redondo. Females are up to 18 feet. That's big, great white shark sort of size, just to give you an idea of scale. Males are measly 12-foot. And we are in the Puget Sound seeing three to eight-foot individuals, which we would believe that the Puget Sound is a nursery ground for these animals. They are listed as near threatened by IUCN, and the population is noted as as decreasing. And Washington State lists them as a species of greatest conservation need. By the way, the pictures on these are all from underwater photo contests hosted by the Mast, taken of sharks at Redondo. Redondo itself is one of the top dive sites in Puget Sound, a study by SeaDoc Society founded as the number two most popular site. There are three dive shops within four miles, eight in TLC that are both in the city limits, underwater sports in Federway, and a lot of other ones scattered around. More than 10 different dive shops held classes consistently at Redondo prior to pier and parking construction. Why dive Redondo? Parking, easy access to water, quality dive sites, distance from home, amazing brand-new bathrooms, and outdoor shower and rinse areas. A little bit of the financial, the study that I mentioned before looked at financial impact of scuba diving in our region. Club divers, which is a very small set, those are basically their, the shops have a club group that dives maybe on a weekly or on a monthly basis. That, those groups alone spent $3.9 million in the region, and for every dollar added $1.8 worth of economic activity. Local Facebook group, Thursday Night Diving at Redondo, is over 500 members. According to the Harbor Master, $80,000 a year in parking fees prior to construction and is predicted to probably double once the new facility, so this is going to be a revenue stream. So this is the final slide. So these are the steps that the city council could potentially take, as were mentioned before. Councilmember Mahoney?
Thank you. This was introduced to me by the dive community and Russ, and we, several of us got together from all the Highland School District, Highland College, our city manager was there, Harbor Master, pretty much everybody represented. And it's such a great thing, just so you guys know, I've been diving for just shy of 25 years. It took me nearly 15 years before I saw my first one. But when you see these animals, they're incredible, and they're worth saving and bringing attention to and education and so forth. Part of these requests here were were a couple of things. I thought the statement that Russ, Russ proposed was making Des Moines, Washington the six-gill shark capital of the world. No one's done something like this really before, so it would be kind of a breaking a trend. And we are, as he's mentioned, this is the place you go to see them during that window of time. The other one was, we were looking for other, other ideas of when to do the, we'd, we want to get a proclamation, and we'd hold an event on July 6th. We, and as he mentioned, it coincided with many of the things, Shark Week, Six, we talked about Six Six, but it didn't work out, and it made more sense to do it in July and so forth. And of course, Shark Month. And, of course, Shark Month. Then, of course, we were looking at, it was a suggestion during that meeting of can we, can we do something that's kind of honorary? And it, and it was, we were spitballing ideas, and somebody came up with the idea of an honorary commemorative, you know, name for a street. And so, of course, I, we looked at what Sixth Avenue is. And, of course, the one Sixth Avenue we have is down in our Marina District. And part of what we wanted to do is, we didn't want to keep the focus just like in Redondo or down at the Marina, we wanted to spread across the town. And taking advantage of, it would, we don't have to change anybody's address. It would be an honorary name, like we do Waterland Week, or Waterland Way, or Backstage Alley, those kind of things. And Rainier Boulevard up by the high school, or Rainier Ave. It was, it was, it was in that. We, we believe that a lot of this to be paid for, like the educational signs and stuff, can be done with some of the swag and things like that. I've spoke to the, many dive shops in the community. They're willing to sell for fundraisers to help us raise money. We believe that there are, in speaking to the Harbor Master, he thought there were some grant opportunities and so forth. So as far as the financial piece of it, as far as the city's concerned, yes, there would be some outlay, but it would be minimal. The recognition that we'd get in the diving community would bring people not only from the local region, but to the state, to the Northwest, the United States, Canada, and even the world. I've been down in Redondo and Dove many times, and I've met people from all over the world. So it's, it's a great opportunity for us to expand and be this premier waterfront destination that we've set a goal to do. So, it's, it's kind of that kind of thing. So I, I'd kind of like to turn it over to my councilmembers about what they're thinking. Or Catherine, did you have anything to say before that happens? So, just kind of want to hear your thoughts on it. And if you're kind of for it, then I would go ahead and make a motion to start moving this forward.
Right, so do we have any questions? Councilmember Harris?
Yeah, is there an ichthyologist in the house? I, I mean, I'm familiar with these things, strangely enough, just from fishing. You know, I mean, they're, professional fishermen will encounter these things, but they're like 500 feet down? I mean, they're, they're like deep, okay? And so...
Like Blue Planet and the Deep, some of those, those are six gills.
They're, they're, they're just bycatch.
No, these are deep-water shark. And the way I describe it is, is they're shallow, is diver-deep.
So, I mean, you kind of touched on it. I'm just like, why Redondo? And if, and if the answer is not known, is there a PhD in there or a grant opportu? No, I mean, I mean, seriously, like, why?
There's no absolute answer to that.
Well, yes, there is. There, there will be at some point. I'm just, you know...
Sure. They're, they're, they're seen, you know, you'll hear Les, Les Davis Fisher, because they're occasionally caught by bike, what's called bycatch, where you're fishing for something else and you catch them. There's, there's stories of them being caught around. So we, we know they're in the Puget Sound. Seattle Aquarium was doing some research about 10 years ago that they're no longer falling through. They were getting them off their dock, right? So again, they're in the Puget Sound. But Redondo just is, is the, is the center of the universe for them.
Just what I'm getting at is, this isn't just a one-off. They're gonna, they've been here for a while, they're gonna be here for a while.
Their numbers have been increasing in terms of what divers are seeing. So, I'm, I, the first one I saw was probably 15 years ago.
Okay.
But I know of divers last year that saw a couple, and, and maybe even several on, on, on one dive. Yeah, so...
No, I'm just fascinated by it because there's...
Yeah, no. There's, there's not an obvious answer. And it would, you know, scientifically, it'd be hard to prove, because, you know, control study, blah, blah, blah. But it's, it's, it's definitely interesting. And so, and there's no, nobody's look, nobody currently is looking closely at Puget Sound populations. Fish and Wildlife is doing some management, Fish and Wildlife is doing some outreach. Like, they're probably going to put a, a sign on the end of Scott and Katie's dock that basically says, "No fishing," right? They're, they're working on some of that kind of stuff. So, and so there's been conversations about trying to link the messaging around this with the messaging around that. Because, you know, I, I kind of believe is, is you shine a bright light on stuff to get good behavior and get people excited.
Yeah, no, I just, I mean, I just, it would just be weird to put up a sign and everything and then find out that they migrate down to Vancouver.
And, and, you know, what's going to happen in 20 years? Right? But right now, they've been seen, you know, I know of divers that have seen them for 20 years at Redondo. So, I mean, I can go back 20 years and I can tell you that they're there. So, you know...
No, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just obsessing because it's just, I'm like, I remember. Oh, yeah, the other thing is, do they call them smileys here, or have you ever heard that thing?
I've never heard that.
No, in Irish, a little, little Jeopardy question. In Irish, the Irish name for six-gill sharks is, it translates as the smiley fish. Because they have this kind of, uh...
Yeah.
I don't know if it comes out.
And right again, they're, they're found globally, right? They're found all around the world.
Yeah, 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 no, no, it's, it's super wild. My only, the only, the only thing about this, and I'll just, is just, I wish that the street could actually be, I'd be more amenable to having the street be to Redondo if, if really it's a tourism thing. I mean, I get the idea of Sixth Avenue, but if the idea is to make Redondo the destination, it would just, that would seem more like, but anyway, it's not anything, it's wonderful. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Just a, just a quick response to that. They have been seen at saltwater, in diving, and actually out near the pier in, in the Marina, just off the Northwest. But like I said, I could understand, and trust me, we looked at how we might be able to do it down there. But with, it was such a good idea to combine Sixth Avenue with six-gill shark Avenue. We just, we just really liked the idea. That's why we kind of, all kind of decided that was the best option. And it does bring a different part of town into the inclusion, is, is kind of what our thinking about it was. But agreed, we explored the opportunity there. And, you know, you got Redondo Way and those kind of things, and they're already named appropriately. So, we didn't want to take that away from them as well. But, yeah, we, we, we shared your concerns on that, and that's why we kind of came up with that. And with the Marina District, and some of the placemaking we're making there, and some of the plans, it brought excitement and kind of a luster to the community as well, in a different light, in a different part of town.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz?
Yeah, I don't really have a question for you. I thought it was a wonderful presentation. Thank you. And I, and I think this is a really cool idea. I think the little things that we can do to make our community unique, to draw some interest, draw some focus on that, you know, and as you pointed out, there, you know, 3.9 million spent by local divers, that's, you know, dive clubs. That's great. That's, that's money on the table. Let's, let's go ahead and get it. So, I like the idea of establishing ourselves as the six-gill shark. I also really like the idea of spreading it throughout the town. I think the renaming of Sixth Avenue, or honorary naming of Sixth Avenue as Six-Gill Shark Avenue, it fits. It's a little corny, but, you know, it, it does sort of make the whole town aware rather than focusing on just one place. So, I, I, I like the idea. I think it's a good one.
Any other comments or questions? So, I'll take, okay, Councilmember Grace Matsui, and then Councilmember Oxiger.
Thank you. I appreciate getting the opportunity to learn a bunch more about six-gill sharks today. I do want to point out that we are working towards having a, a bit of fiscal discipline in making sure that all proposals that come before the council have hard numbers, and how much it's going to be supported, and how much it might cost. And I always get a little worried when people start talking about buying swag. I was part of a recent organization, recently part of an organization that got left literally holding a bunch of bags. And, and we thought they would sell, but they did not. And it ends up being actually a cost that was not recuperated. And so, while I think it's a fantastic idea, and we have lots of ways that we can celebrate six-gill sharks, I would like to see all presentations to this council that have financial outlay have a hard number attached to them. Thank you.
I have a quick clarity question. When you're talking about the swag, whether it's, is, are you talking about this would be an outlay of your own organization? Or are you talking about this would be an outlay from, are you asking for a city outlay for swag?
I don't see it as a city outlay. What I see is setting up some, I'll use Zazzle as an example, where Eight could buy some shirts, you know, that are, that are specifically set up. They keep, they sell them in their store, and, and, you know, they give a dollar per thing. What, you know, something like that. I don't, I'm, I don't see the city. And then in terms of like the infographic, which that's, that's going to be a couple thousand dollars to put two signs in there. We've already been looking at some funding to help cover that cost. So, it would, at worst-case scenario, it would be pretty minor for the city.
It looks like the only cost to the city from this would be the commemorative street sign addition, like we did for Waterland Way. And Mike has indicated it was a very minimal cost, but we can absolutely bring back that number.
Go ahead.
I, I appreciate it. It also means that there's a large difference between a brainstorming session and what we are committing to spending dollars on. And there's a lot of brainstorming, but that's different than voting on a commitment for a few thousand dollars there, a few thousand dollars there. And so, if we move forward with the idea, I would like to see a formal proposal with the true cost of what we're committing to. That's just the follow-up. Because, again, I don't want to say, hey, we're going to commit to this great idea, and then you turn around and say, it's going to cost $26,000. Oh, wait a second. So, again, it's just, let's talk about making sure that proposals that come to the council that include any sort of financial support have estimates, numbers. Thank you.
If I can just add, the, the only thing at this stage that we're asking the city are these three things, which don't have, except for this, a little bit of signage, right? The, the, the other ideas were other things that could be taken with partners and so forth. That's, that's not what's being asked.
I, I appreciate the clarification.
Councilmember Oxiger?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. One of the things that I think is interesting about this is that if you talk to the general public, the moment you mention shark, you're thinking about great whites. And, you know, threats to, threats to people's stuff. Can you elaborate a little bit more on...
Yeah.
Whether these are threat, you know...
Yeah, yeah. So, there are actually 11 species of sharks that are found in the, in the, in the Puget Sound, Salish Sea. And I've heard of one bite of any shark on the Washington outer coast. Period. That's it, sort of idea. These, these are, these are not aggressive sharks in any way. They're, to be honest, they're actually marine mammal eaters. So, there's a weird, interesting link with SR3 and the stuff that's going on, on there. So, these, these are, you know, that, these, these are not the fearsome things. And to be honest, the fearsome thing is, is mostly not real, anyway. So there, I, I would dive with them. I would take my son to dive with them. I would get, you know, as, as close as I am to this podium, to them, and not have any concern.
Councilmember Harris?
Yeah, look up that smiley fish thing. I mean, they're, they're very innocuous. No, seriously, they're, they're very innocuous. And, and, but I just want to tag on something Councilmember Grace Matsui said. In, I, I don't think anybody's, you know, trying to hold you to account, but it's just why I like the former two-touch system we had, where you would have this kind of a thing, and there is no onus about money. It's just, the city manager comes back with a specific proposal, and then we look at it and we go, oh, yeah, it's 1,800 bucks, or whatever it is. And it, it's just, there's a politeness factor. It reduces the friction kind of a thing. And I, I, but I fully concur that basically every, the reason I like the two-touch thing is everything should come back. The vagueness thing, I, I, I never vote for anything, even if it were a cure for cancer, if, you know, there wasn't something like a spreadsheet involved. And, and, but I don't like to have presenters feel that pressure to be accountable for the dollars. It's just, it's just, I call it good hygiene. So, yeah, thank you.
Yep, happy to. I mean, again, this was a presentation that, you know, Russ put together, and it really didn't actually come from city staff. But we are happy to get things flushed out and bring it back to you all to see if you're, you know, wanting to move forward.
It looks like, one moment here for a second. Councilmember Nutting, do you have any questions for clarity?
I don't have any questions for clarity. I, I just, if I could make a comment.
Absolutely.
As, Councilmember Mahoney, I've, I've been a diver for well over 25 years, and I did not have to wait as long as he did to, my first encounter with a six-gill, was not at Redondo, it was in Canada, and we used to do a lot of boat diving up there. And the dive shop that I went through, as soon as these things were being spotted, their, their revenue and, you, you just couldn't get a dive off of any of the boats when these wonderful creatures were at the depths that they were. And I was as close as the presenter was to the podium with one of these incredible creatures. And so, well, for this moving forward, I just, I, I like to, so, Councilmember Grace Matsui and Councilmember Harris, I just cautiously move forward, be fiscally accountable. And I know it's, it's probably not going to be much, but I'd like to see the dollars. I'm excited for it. I, I'm excited for what it's going to bring, the city, and Redondo, and the surrounding areas. So, it, it, it's exciting to be a part of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it looks like a couple of you were thinking about a question, or a comment? Maybe Councilmember Mahoney?
No? No.
Okay, so then, I do, really quick?
Yeah.
You do? You have another one?
I, I have one very quick.
All right.
So, just in the thing, it's, it, just consistent spelling. I hate to be that guy, but if you name the street, I just don't want it to be the number six. And if the species is S-I-X-G-I-L-L...
Yeah, well, I, I think in the, in the motion that I have, I think I'd already kind of taken into the same considerations of, of this. And, and basically, a couple of these, I think, are essentially free. So, so that's part of my motion, and I've, I've always thought this. So I move...
Oh, wait, I mean, I, I do have still...
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah. Did you have something?
Thank you. Appreciate the acknowledgement. My question is whether this would be better suited for a new business, since we're in a briefing right now?
And I'm, you could answer that, but there were also, there was also this recommendation about a second touch. So, do you want to respond to that? Or...
Yeah, you can make a motion now, or you can make it later.
Okay. So, my, my comments are, I love this. I loved especially the part in the slide deck where you talked about the different kinds of partnerships, the education, pulling, pulling the schools and Maritime, Highline, the opportunities. And then I wasn't aware of how endangered the species might be. But then, combined with how accessible it just happens to be here versus other places in the, maybe the country or the Pacific, I'm not sure where they exist. But, so I love the honoring and the protection and the awareness building and the education about an animal like this. So, absolutely fantastic. And I love the energy that many of you have pulled together to create something like this. It's very cool. But nothing has yet happened. So, my, and I do recognize the first two items that were brought forward are relatively free. It's just make a proclamation, and all the work is up to however you guys gather each other. I would be very reticent to spend any time at all putting up a sign downtown for something that hasn't ever happened yet. So I would really like to see energy built, some ground under you. It's like, oh, did you really have your festival? And did people really come? And did you really like doing this? Do you want to do it again? Because it's not just the expense, even if the sign is only a couple hundred bucks to put up, you've put up this sign downtown that people are going to ask about, and you'll have to say, oh, no, we really don't have that anymore. I mean, I don't, no cold water. I mean, I'm, I'm totally stoked about the idea. But I, I would like to see a one or two events. And then the, the energy builds, and, oh, yeah, we really do have this thing in town, and this is why we did this with this street. That, that's my take on that. So I guess the next question is, did we want to have two touches or did we want to make? I want, don't want you to make a motion and have it fail.
Well.
Yeah.
It, I, you haven't heard the motion yet.
Yeah, go ahead.
And, and I would like to do it now since we have folks here that have come for their time and
Okay.
rather than waiting later, it, it just would be courtesy. But basically, this is the motion I have, is I move to make Des Moines, Washington, the Six Gill Shark capital of the world. I move that we create a proclamation to honor that on July 6. I, I, we, we direct city staff to explore the cost and of Sixth Avenue being renamed honorarily as Six Gill Shark Avenue. And I agree with the spelling as it would be S.I.X.G.I.L.L. And explore grant opportunities for the education boards, bringing the last two components of the motion back before council for approval. There's my motion.
It's a long motion.
Yes, but it had to be all-inclusive.
Okay, uh, all right, do I have a second? There's a second with, go ahead, Jeremy. Uh, just, just a moment. So there's a second with Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, open for discussion. Uh, it sounded like Councilmember Nutting, you were wanting to, I'm going to, I'll grab you first.
No, I was just going to second the motion there, Mayor. Thank you.
Oh, sorry about that. All right, thanks. Hands raised, discussion. Councilmember Harris.
Would you be amenable to simply bringing the whole shebang back as one vote for the next thing? It sounds like you're asking for action, for some action now and then some to come back. And so I'm just saying, would you be okay with bringing the entire thing back for a vote next time?
Well, not, not really. I'm, I'm, I'm of the, of the idea that no matter what happens, I believe we need to make this the Six Gill Shark capital of the world and honor it on July 6. And I think there should be no reservation in that piece. It's when obviously being fiscal responsible, seeing the other options, we can conclude other things we can do to honor it. So I'm, I'm going to say no to the request.
Any other discussion items? Councilmember Oxiger.
Well, I have to agree that I think that the motion as it's, as it's constituted, you know, in a sense obligates us to the process. I mean, I think it's, I, I don't think there's any, you know, opposition necessarily on the part of anybody here on the dais towards the idea. But the devil's in the details and it would be nice to, you know, you know, have staff look at it, bring back some, some additional information, present this, you know, as a second read on this. I'm, I'm nervous about getting too far down the road before we actually do some research.
So Councilmember Mahoney, would you be open to dividing this into two motions and take care of the free stuff? And then bring, and then, for the sake of everybody sitting here to be able to celebrate something moving forward? And then make a, a second motion with some discussion with regard to the third item? Would you be open to that?
That's basically what I did. The first two are the motion to go ahead and do those. And then the second is bring forth the rest on council. That's the way I intended it. If you want it in two separate motions, I'll be glad to do that. But I was just trying to be all-inclusive on this. So is that what you prefer? That I'd be amenable to.
Okay, uh, I'm just trying to get a feel from the council on the, it almost seemed like there was, there was, that would, might be favorable. Councilmember Grace Matsui.
My, my hesitation remains that it, it does feel like we're being obligated to support something that does cost money without figures with the motion. And I don't know that, it, the motion has how many parts?
Well, the motion had four parts. Two, two were to make Des Moines the Six Gill Shark capital of the world. The other, the second component of that was make July 6 the Six Gill Shark Day. Then it was to explore the cost for the potential to na, honorarily name Sixth Avenue and also look into grants to assist with the funding of education boards.
I appreciate the clarification. I think that it, it's tough for me to support the four parts. I think I would be more comfortable splitting it into the two that, that Mayor Buxton suggested. Sorry about that. Someday this voice will come back. And I appreciate that the language is explore, but there are other types of events and commemorative. Is this something that is moving towards an ad hoc committee to talk about celebratory?
No, the vision we had was more of a, it would be down on the marina or down at Redondo, would be reading of the proclamation. That, that simple. Could, we didn't, we didn't.
I envisioned like basically a, a dive party, right? Invite people to come and go look for six gills. Proclamation is read. That's, that's kind of my envision in Redondo. So there wouldn't, besides it being hosted in Redondo, I don't foresee there being any cost to the city.
Uh, so we have Deputy Mayor Steinmetz and, and Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, I, I think it makes some sense, given the concerns, the financial concerns, to divide the question. The first two, making it Six Gill Shark capital and doing the proclamation on July 6, the Six Gill Shark Day, great. There's no cost to the city for that. And frankly, we would expect the dive community to put on the celebration at that time, you know, so. But I do think that asking staff to come back with the cost of, of the commemorative signs and just exploring any grant opportunities that might exist out there, that, those are two separate things. And one we can, I hope there's not any heartburn doing tonight. And the second, and there's going to be the third and the fourth parts are something we need to look into and, and learn a little bit more about. So I'd, I'd support splitting the motion.
So then I'll, I'll rescind.
Well, there was one more, there was another hand raised here. Councilmember Harris, do you still have a discussion?
Yeah, thank, thank you. So this is where I start to get stroppy as when I put on my other marketing hat is just, we've done since I've lived here, any number of, you know, initiatives to try to drive tourism and interest in Cape Cod and Des Moines and so forth. And at the risk of, yeah, the reason that I wanted to put it all together is that it's a, at some point, we have to learn to market properly, okay? And coordinate activities and really drive traffic here like we know what we're doing. And, and I'm sorry, but if we do all of this ad hoc stuff and don't think about it, like, okay, what is this weekend? Or, and really, because that's what marketers actually do. And so I, I was really trying to be helpful here. It's not just the money. There is a certain discipline to bringing people to your community. It's not like, hey, man, this is strawberry day and this is, it, it, it's really a thing that people get paid a lot of money to do. And so it sounds like I'm being difficult, but I'm just, it's getting, it started out as something like, oh yeah, sure, bring it back, you know, 1,500 bucks, whatever, you know, you know, swell. But I just wanted the city to have a few minutes to think about, how do you put these events together? Because we've got the, the UFO thing and other stuff we want to try to coordinate over time. And maybe the, the drone thing. And I, I just like having the city have some time to think about this stuff. But the more that it becomes just, we're going to do this and then, it, it just sounds uncoordinated to me and that always makes me nervous. So, and, and that, that's it, I'm done.
Okay. I, one more thought from me is that the more talk there is about the city being involved in marketing or tourism and all that, it, the most, one, probably the most expensive event that the city conducts is going to be two days before this every year. So it's just, I, I just think that this needs to be given over to a community organization that wants to host, do, spend, whatever. I'm just so happy to make a proclamation. So that's my take on that. Would you, I'm gonna, I think we're good on, would you like to split that motion? Thank you.
I want to split the motion. I'm going to rescind my other one.
No, go ahead.
Just for process because it's been seconded, the motion.
Oh, thank you.
So you can ask permission.
Oh, from the, those that seconded it?
Well, just from the whole council.
Okay, so do I have the council's permission to rescind that motion?
To withdraw.
To withdraw and then.
Withdraw.
Okay. This, one, two, so can we do it ahead now? And he agrees as well. Okay, so go ahead, Councilmember. Thank you.
I move to make Des Moines, Washington, the Six Gill's capital shark, or Six Gill Shark capital of the world and make July 6 Six Gill Shark Day.
Do I have a second? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz for the second, any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, Councilmember Grace Matsui, Councilmember Mahoney. How do you vote? Councilmember Nutting?
In favor.
Councilmember Nutting and myself in favor, all opposed. Councilmember Oxiger and Councilmember Harris oppose. Passes five, two. All right, Councilmember Mahoney.
For the second motion, I, I move that we ask staff to look at the cost of renaming Sixth Avenue in an honorary capacity, Six Gill Shark Avenue, and that's spelled S.I.X.G.I.L.L. And explore any potential grant opportunities they may have to assist in the funding of education boards in the future. Or direct staff.
Do I have a second? Second with Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, a discussion. Councilmember Grace Matsui.
I want to thank Councilmember Mahoney for his willingness to make adjustments for that motion. I very much appreciate it. I will be supporting this because I think it is a great opportunity and it will give us a chance to take a look at financial impacts and take a look at whether or not this is something that has the energy behind it, the community support, like Mayor Buxton said. So I just wanted to say thank you and I will support it.
Uh, Councilmember Oxiger.
I too will be supporting this. And I'd just like to explain, you know, on the previous vote, is that it's simply a matter of not getting the cart before the horse. Doing the details and doing the due diligence first. And I don't think it's a tremendous amount of time that it's going to take to do that. So I want you to know, I'm supportive of the idea. It's just that I think we've got to, we've got to follow procedure. And I don't think this, I don't think the previous vote did that. So, but I will support this. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Nutting, do you have any questions or comments on this one?
No comments.
All right. Anyone else on this? Okay, all in favor of this motion, raise your right hand. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, Councilmember Oxiger, Councilmember Grace Matsui, Councilmember Mahoney, Councilmember Harris, how do you vote? Councilmember Nutting?
In favor, Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember Nutting and myself in favor, it passes seven, zero. Thank you so much. It's all right if you clap on this one. That was hard fought. Hard fought, hard fought. All right. Okay, we're moving into the next segment of our meeting. I do have a little comment I'd like to invite the city attorney to make a comment for a moment or so. We, we've been having a few opportunities for points of order. And I would like some, before we move into deliberation in this meeting and further meetings, just a little clarification before using that feature of a discussion.
Sure, Mayor. Thanks. Mayor and councilmembers, I was asked to look into this point of order issue and provide a quick summary. So a point of order is a motion used to correct a rule violation. So if there is an issue, the council member is encouraged to say point of order at any time. And then the chair, the mayor, will respond at that time and ask for the council member to state their point of order. And then the member then explains the perceived rule violation and then the mayor will make a ruling on that. And if there is, if there's a question about that ruling, it can be appealed to the full council. And then there's a majority vote. So just in summary, if you have a point of order, you then state, you wait for the mayor to acknowledge it and then you state the rule violation. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, moving into consent. Would the city clerk please read this consent calendar?
Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, approval of minutes. Item three, Redondo restroom replacement project construction contingency amendment. Item four, park side wetland cleanup consultant services contract award. And that concludes the consent agenda, Mayor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Councilmember, I'm gonna, sorry, Jeremy, it's harder to see that. I'm going to call that, call Councilmember Mahoney on that. And the second for Deputy Mayor Steinmetz. All right. Is there an item that a council member wishes to pull? Councilmember Harris.
Item three, the restroom contingency.
All right. Any other items that council member wishes to pull? Okay, we'll be reading, we'll be voting on the consent agenda as read for items one, two, and four. All in favor, raise your right hand. And how do you vote, Councilmember Nutting?
In favor.
In favor, seven, zero, passes. All right, I'm going to turn over item number three to Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. I have a one-word question. Why? Just for, for the record. Yeah, that's, that's all.
Councilmember Harris, we are increasing the contingency so that we can use the contractor's onsite more effectively to also install the parking structure dollars. So the money that's coming in here is coming from the parking structure for, for the marina. So we don't have to go back out and rebid a separate construction project just for the parking structure.
Thank you, sir.
All right, any other questions? All right, so since you pulled, would you like to read the motions, councilmember, or pass that to somebody else?
Sure thing.
All right.
I move to increase the project construction contingency for the Redondo restroom replacement project, comma, in the amount of $130,000, comma, bringing the total project construction contingency to $320,000.
Do I have a second? A second for, with Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. How do you vote, Councilmember Nutting?
In favor, Mayor.
In favor, seven, zero. Thank you very much. Would you like to read motion number two?
I move to direct administration to bring forward a budget amendment to the 2025 to 2030 capital improvement plan and the 2025 capital budget to include the amended Redondo restroom replacement project as described herein, comma, and include such amendment in the next available budget amendment ordinance.
Do I have a second? Second for Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. How do you vote, Councilmember Nutting?
In favor, Mayor.
In favors. Thank you, seven, zero, passes. All right. All right, so now we move on to unfinished business. And the first item up is the airport advisory committee discussion. The purpose of this item is to consider the airport committee purpose and composition. And we were given a list of, there, well, there's a summary in the packet and a list of four questions that staff would like to have answered tonight. And for reference, it's on page 25 of the packet. So I'm going to go there.
Mayor Rebecca has a brief presentation, which the questions are on a slide.
Thank you.
So you don't have to flip through all the paper if you don't want.
All right, well, Rebecca, welcome to the podium. So handing the baton to you. And I was wrong about the page number. That was the previous. That was the previous.
Never mind, we don't have a presentation. So, Rebecca, will you walk through it?
I have the page pulled up on my computer, do you need that?
Okay.
I'll just go through it and speak.
Okay. So, tonight's item is to finalize the structure and the creation of the airport committee. We requested to also identify any other options for how the committee can be structured. In October 2024 and February 2025, the council voted to move forward with an independent committee. However, if the council wants to change this course or pursue any different structures, such as making it part of a council committee, or having a focused study session dedicated to deep dives at the airport issue, you can explore those options as well. Based on prior conversations, the purpose of the airport committee is to look at the SAM, Sustainable Airport Master Plan Timeline, and any responses for the environmental process, recommendations related to the interlocal agreement and airport with the airport partners, recommendations related to any consultant needs that assist with any relevant projects, assist with the START, which is the Seattle Tacoma Airport Roundtable Committee. We are currently in need of a new community appointee, and recommendations for the city strategy with the Port of Seattle. Next is talking about the committee composition. This committee was proposed to be ad hoc, will meet at least quarterly to assist in any airport-related issues. The committee suggestion is to consist with one council member as a member and four citizens or business participants. Partners, participants must be a resident or business owner within the city, have a reasonable understanding of airport-related issues or willingness to learn as necessary, reflect and represent community advocacy organizations and/or relevant groups in the community. Committee leadership, proposing the committee either choose its own chairperson, the chair should encourage collaboration and participation with a directive role, the chair shall establish the agenda and time of the meetings, or the chair can be the council member. In terms of work plan and responsibilities, the committee will be responsible for receiving assignments and tasks as directed by the council, develop a work plan that includes recommended tasks and research subjects, and this plan would be submitted to the council for approval or direction. And then the discussion as discussed, those four topics would be, what is the purpose of this committee? How many citizens should be on this committee? Which council member should be appointed to this committee? And should the committee choose their chair, or would the council member like to be the chair? And so, those are the brief discussion points.
Okay. So, before we take these bullet points one at a time, does anyone have questions for Rebecca for clarity on this summary that we just received? Okay, Councilmember Nutting, do you have any questions?
No questions, Mayor, thank you.
All right. Well, then, thank you, Rebecca, and we, we will begin with bullet number one, what is the purpose of this committee? And that, if you'll refer to your packet as Rebecca just read to us, word for word out of the packet, does anybody have an amendment that they want to offer for this, or is this good for us? Are you happy with that description, bullet number one? Councilmember Harris.
So, are you saying that this committee would, on just the, the second little round sub-bullet thing, formation of an ILA with airport partners, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with the notion of an advisory committee formulating an interlocal agreement with airport partners, I mean, just.
And it does just say it's recommending at the top of that, provide recommendations and advice on these topics. So, it's a topic, it's not a decision.
They would provide a recommendation on the ILA. So, if the ILA needed to be extended or changed, then they would provide the recommendation to council.
Yeah, good. All right, that's it.
Do you have any, any questions or comments on item number one? Councilmember Nutting, how do you feel about item number one as read?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, I just find out number one.
Okay. So, do we want a motion on each one of these bullets? No? Okay, do I? All right, so do we have a head nod that number, bullet number one is good? Okay, it looks like we're good. How many citizens should be on the committee? The recommendation was five, five people, one council member, and four citizens. Do we have a head nod on that, that, oh, go ahead, question, Councilmember Grace Matsui and then Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. I acknowledge that I was not here on the February 13th meeting, and so, I, I'm hoping that someone may be able to give me a recap of when this moved from a standing committee to an ad hoc, or if that's the proposal that we're just seeing now. Thank you.
That was actually found when we re-watched the video from the October meeting when this was originally discussed, and ad hoc was the terminology used then. So, but we're happy to whatever you all want, but that was what the original motion was in October.
All right. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, and, and as I recall, just in part to answer that question, airport, the previous airport committees, you know, have come and gone, and trying to keep them together as a standing committee when perhaps there wasn't enough work for them to do, there should be, but that was the reason, I think, why people suggested it be an ad hoc, because we have some very specific things that are trying to be addressed in this committee, as we've seen in part one. I, I am not comfortable with the composition as it's been proposed. I don't think that any council member, and certainly not just one, under any circumstances, should be on the committee. I think it's an opportunity for, you know, grandstanding to, for somebody to claim, on the council, to claim ownership of an issue. I think that there are some divided loyalties by council members, and I think that it's something we're seeking advice from, and we can discuss among ourselves, we, we share advice with each other all the time up here. But if we're asking an airport committee to advise us on some things, then, then I think that there shouldn't be a council member on that, we should receive the advice, and then we can discuss it among themselves. That being the case, I think there should be five citizen representatives, so there is an odd number, so that they actually can make a decision. You don't want to get stuck with a two, two tie on things, and as a consequence, my proposal is that we remove any member from the council on that committee and raise it to five citizens.
Okay. Any other comments on that? Call on Councilmember, oh, Councilmember Mahoney, and then Councilmember Grace Matsui.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think the, the, I, I think, you know, I attended several of the previous airport committee meetings, and they didn't have a council member on it, I thought it was a good deal. I sat and listened. The only thing that I thought might be an advantage is, whether it's five or seven I, members, and the only reason why is I think the START committee members should be part of this committee as well. I think they're hearing insight and information that brings value, whether it's the five and two of them are START members, or it's five members from the community and the two START members, not to make the committee too huge, I just think they bring a value to the committee. So, whether it's five or seven, I think they should be a part of it, is, is the only other comment I had on that.
So, are you, just for clarity, are you saying that if we pick the START members, they, they would serve on two committees?
I just, yes.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, the START, they, they, they attend, you know, these monthly meetings and so forth, but I think they bring a value to the committee, and being members of the committee, that we'd want to get the outcomes. They get access to information that other committee members may not, and attending START meetings and the value that that brings, I think, provides value. And I, as far as the number, five or seven, I know we were able to get five concerned members of the community, no problem, I just think they bring value, that's all I'm calling out.
Councilmember Grace Matsui, and then Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. I'm considering and thinking about how this is comparable to other advisory committees, and whether or not the council members who are on them are liaisons, or are they full members?
I think they're just liaisons.
The one that I based this on was Burian, who is the chair.
I'm sorry, I mean, our advisory.
Yeah, ours, they're just liaisons.
They are just liaisons, okay. So, this would be different than the other advisory committees that we have, it sounds like. Okay.
Well, I do, I'm sorry, I do want to correct that. I think our senior, there is one of our advisory committees, either senior services or human services, that the council member, according to code, really is a voting member of that committee, one of those, and I can't remember which one, so, just for clarity. Okay. Tim's.
I can stall for time.
Okay.
It's not going to be tap dancing. I also, I acknowledge Deputy Mayor Steinmetz's suggestion about having an odd number, but I would include the council member as the odd number, up to five, if that person actually turns out to be a full member, you'd still have five if they were voting, but.
We're pretty odd.
Yeah, and we also, pretty odd. I, I do want to call out the last bullet point of the participants must, and that language is very prescriptive, you must be a resident or business owner, you must have a reasonable understanding or have a willingness to learn, and you must reflect an advocacy group or a relevant group, and I just want to think very carefully about, are you saying that all four or all X number of citizen or business participants have to meet all three of those criteria, or can they meet just one? And it kind of leaves no room for someone who is not a part of a community organization, and perhaps they would have other things to say and bring, and so, it'd be nice if there was somebody who could be unaffiliated. Who knows, maybe someone who's not affiliated won't be interested, but the way I'm reading this, it says, all, you know, the participants must meet all three of these criteria. Food for thought in that regard. Did I, do you need more time? I could go into song and dance.
We found it, I'm sorry, it's the, it's the senior services that.
Oh, it's me.
Yeah, I know. So, then I don't feel so bad, but.
Yeah.
Apparently you are technically a member.
I am technically a member, yes, thank you very much.
Part of the club.
There you go. I knew, I knew one of them, I feel like one of them was different, which is one of the things that is a little bit interesting about our code, is that there are these major differences. So, we do have one advisory committee where the council is a full voting member.
Excuse me. Just for clarification, does that, does that role transfer when you substitute?
What do you, what are you asking?
Does the, does the full membership, full voting membership on the committee transfer when you're substituting for the person that's there?
So, if Councilmember Grace Matsui can't be there, and you go hypothetically, are you a valid member? I don't, I don't, no, you are not.
Yeah, thank you.
I think you were next, Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. So, Rebecca or the city, how many people, if you're aware, have expressed interest in said committee thus far?
Until this is determined, we haven't put out the advertisement or the call for applicants.
Okay, no, I'm just struck by the fact that, I mean, in the past, just, you got to understand, when the SAM was kind of a, a thing back, you know, in the day, and you'd have a certain number of people who were interested, and I'm just.
We've had a few people come and talk during these meetings, we've gotten a few emails, but because we haven't really put out a call for applications, we don't really know how many people will apply yet.
Okay, and, and the other, what was the other thing I was going to ask, is that, it, yeah, well, no, actually, it's sort of rhetorical in that on our, it, it's, on, on the START committee, we had a business owner who does not live here for a couple of years, and so, it's just sort of a funny thing. I'm, I'm just, I'm just thinking about being part of a committee that one doesn't necessarily feel required to have an interest, or, you know, I'm just trying to think about what the actual goals would be of the thing, but anyway, that's it.
All right. Councilmember Nutting, I want to check in with you, do you have any comments on this item? How many citizens?
Thank you, I remember that, yes.
Absolutely.
Thank, thank you. I, I have to agree with Deputy Mayor Steinmetz and Councilmember Mahoney that at least two of these members should be START members, whether it's, whether it's five members or whether it's seven, it's neither here nor there. To Councilmember Grace Matsui's point, I'm, I'm pretty steadfast on the fact that the participants must be resident or business owner in Des Moines, but the second bullet point, have a reasonable understanding of airport-related issues or willingness to learn is very ambiguous, vague, I mean, I could, I, I could tell you that I want to learn about the airports-related issues, but, you know, no's. And then reflect the resident, community advocacy organizations, I mean, again, I don't think that's a, that's an issue as well, I think it's more to be a business owner or resident of the city of Des Moines, and at least an odd number, and two, two of them being part of the START group. So, those are my comments, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with the concern about the word must, although I do think they should, they should be a resident or business owner in Des Moines, in the city of Des Moines, but bullet, the, the second and third bullet point underneath there are more general qualifications, they, and applying the word must really to three bullet points means you have to meet all three. So, I, I just think there's a way to get that done. I like the idea of having the START members on there, and maybe that's two, I would still like to raise it to five citizens, and then I don't see how these people get appointed. Is this a mayoral appointment? Is it council approval? We probably need a process for that, and I would, you know, probably suggest that, like most of our advisory committees, it goes to the mayor, the mayor makes recommendations for council approval. I think that's a tried and true way of doing it, so.
I think they have a response for you.
That was the intent, to be consistent with the other practices, and additionally, on some of the comments on the committee composition, you know, this original document was provided from, from the mayor originally, and we can change it however you all want, it's also something you all can consider as you get applicants, right? And see who your applicant pool is, and, and what you think that makeup should be, and that's just an option if you want it.
Okay, checking in again with you, Councilmember Nutting.
Good, Mayor, thank you.
All right. I guess my, I'll quick my input, I appreciate five, just on the base, on the advice of the Burian Airport Committee, they've tried three, they've tried five, they've tried seven, seven isn't very nimble if they need to get something done, three, it means you can never meet with somebody else without having a quorum, and so, five turned out to be really kind of the golden thing for them after working at this several years. So, that's why I recommended five. I like the. So that's why I recommended five. I like the idea of having two start members. I think anybody really interested in this might, would probably not mind doing that every other, I think a start is every other month, correct? Or is it every month?
It's mostly every month.
Mostly every month. So, so this would be a big commitment for two people. And I like the elimination of those, the second and third bullet under must. I think must can stay with, if the first bullet is there. So those are my takes. Are we ready to ask these few items of the council? Any more comments on this? Do you have, I'm going to ask you each one again, and, and see what the, what the majority opinion is on these three things. So, the first one is number. How about seven? Who is in favor of seven? Who's in favor of five? Looks like we're pretty good there. Looks like, okay, but then I'm going to ask about the start part.
Is that something?
Okay, go ahead.
Councilmember?
Yes.
Do we have any councilmember on the committee or not?
Well, that's next. Okay. So, so we got a number. Did we want to, the next question is, do we, do we feel strongly we would like to have two start members? I'm in favor. Looks like, Councilmember Mahoney, Councilmember Grace Matsui, how do you feel on that one? Councilmember Nutting?
In favor.
In favor. Okay. So it looks like we like five. We like two start members. Do we, how do we feel about having a council member on this committee? Let's say, all of those who do not want a council member on this committee make it purely advisory from the citizens. Got a nod? That's how I feel. That's how.
Purely advisory.
Purely advisory from Councilmember Nutting. So that's four of us. So that's not a super strong. Go ahead. Councilmember Grace Matsui.
Thank you. Going back to the motion that was made in November, so did it say ad hoc advisory committee, or was it ad hoc committee?
Let me go check the minutes. I just remember ad hoc.
Okay.
And, sorry, one other clarification. When you're saying five members, two are start, is it of the five, two are start?
Yes. So, okay, let, let's finish, what was the, we are on right now, council member or not, and we can talk about the ad hoc in a moment. Okay? So, council member or no? Looks like we, and you, you, are you still thinking, Councilmember Grace Matsui?
Sorry about that. I could go either way. I think that, that the benefit to having a council member sometimes can, is an easier connection to staff. I think it's always beneficial in my council or advisory committee meetings, when we had a staff support person, they're able to get information back to you quickly, answer some basic questions. And I think a council member could do that, in this case, along with the staff person. So I haven't, I have, I wouldn't say that I have exceptionally strong feelings about it, but I can see positives either way.
Okay, so this is what we'll do, because this has to come back to us for final approval anyway. So we're, we're, we're sending all this information for a draft to come back. So let's, let's keep it this way. Did you get direction on that?
Well, I just wanted to say, the minutes from October say it's an ad hoc airport committee.
Okay. So the next question then is, well, do we want it to be an advisory committee? If we say, it looks like I got a nod there. I got, I, I feel that it should. Councilmember Mahoney, Councilmember Nutting, do you feel it should be an advisory committee?
It should, I feel it should be an advisory committee.
Okay. Do you have a feeling on that, Councilmember Grace Matsui? No feelings? Okay. Councilmember Oxiger?
I'm still kind of back on the question. The liaison part, what matters, what matters, council liaison. And then, explain again, the difference between advisory, what distinction you think?
Well, the description on, on number one is really, does make an advisory committee because they don't make any decisions. So it does say, serve in an advisory capacity to the council, providing recommendations and advice on the following topics. So it doesn't have, it's not given the power to make decisions, like, for example, the human services advisory. They actually, well, they still do give recommendations, but they, it's, anyway, you get, you get the idea here. We could reserve, if you, maybe you reserve out a couple of these words for when, I would like to get it back to us, and maybe that discussion will only be over two things, instead of eight. Does that make sense?
Okay.
So how about if we hold that for consideration to when it comes back? All right. Ad hoc, we covered advisory, we covered start. Did we agree on eliminating the two bullets below the word must, and keeping it resident or business owner of the city of Des Moines, and eliminate the other two bullets? Councilmember Mahoney?
I don't see why we can't, like, recommend it or something like that. They do bring value. It's just not must. I could see, my apologies, I could see that those two bullet points, and there was some wordsmithing in it, could be recommended, but they, they definitely shouldn't be must.
Maybe we could put those two bullets in the application process, and then, then it would be up to us to decide when people.
That, that would be good.
Okay, good. I think those were all the items for number two. Was there anything that we didn't address for you guys?
Didn't you actually vote on whether it's ad hoc or not? I apologize.
No, I think we were going to, that we're going to keep that for, when it, when it comes back as a draft to.
So we'll draft it as ad hoc?
Draft it as ad hoc, and like, underline it or highlight it. That's going to be a discussion work. Okay. So the next, that's first two bullets. Good, we're moving along. We decided temporarily for the draft purposes, we're not going to appoint a council member for now. Okay. And then, should, should they choose a chair, or, and then that, that question is answered as well. So, are we happy, I do also want to ask, are we happy with the description under number four of the work plan and responsibilities? As you look that, are you happy with that description? Anybody have any, any additions or dislikes? We're looking good for here.
Then my only question is, is we currently have one active start member. Would you like me to only advertise then for four applicants? Because we have one active already, and if they want to sit on this committee, they're already basically appointed. And so then I'd only have four applicants open, if they want to continue to sit on this committee.
We need to come back to approve the.
I know, but when I bring it back, I would only be advertising for four open seats if he wants to sit on this.
Yeah, you'd have to ask that person if they'd want to.
Right. If they do, though. Then that, that's how we would be doing that. Okay? Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For following it quite as quickly as you. All right. It looks like that you have the direction you need. Are you guys, you feel good about this, Rebecca? You have all the direction you need?
Yes.
All right.
Mayor, can I ask if we do the tri, the memorial triangle next? We have some, three poor people who are, are waiting.
Sitting, yeah, that would have been, I'm sorry. I, I think that probably would have been a good thing to rearrange, and my apologies. So, okay. We, the next up, we have the memorial flag triangle. And our surface water engineer, Alex Johnson, is going to be giving his presentation. The purpose of this item is for council to consider the award for the flag triangle project.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, council, deputy mayor, and my fellow city staff, and members of the public here. As the mayor said, my name is Alex Johnson, and I'm a civil engineer with Des Moines Surface Water Group. Recently, on Tuesday, we opened bids for the Des Moines Memorial Flag Triangle Project. Happy to announce that we received six bids, and we have a responsive low bidder. So we're very excited for that. This presentation will give you, this is largely a rehash of a presentation I gave to municipal facilities back in January, but just remind everyone the context of the project, and some updates to the finances. For some background on the project, this project began its life on June 1st, 2023, when it was introduced to council. It has the dual purpose of honoring World War I veterans, as does all of Des Moines Memorial Drive, as well as give us a chance to update the gateway to the city of Des Moines, coming from the north. It was part of a $25.1 million Marina and Redondo redevelopment bond, and it was passed by council on June 8th, 2023, by a vote of five to two. The existing conditions of the triangle and of the flagpole are a large reason for the timing and for the impetus of this project. As you can see in that image, the flagpole is showing some visible cracking. They are near the end of their functional life. And the current flagpole also requires our city staff to use a bucket truck to do any sort of adjustments to the flag and to the holiday lighting. And so, the new project and the new flagpole are intended to be much more efficient and less labor-intensive when anything needs to be adjusted on the flag. To quickly go over some of the key features, there's going to be a new gateway sign, which you'll see a little mock-up in a few slides. The new flagpole and flag, the memorial, the existing memorial plaque will be restored and gets a new post for it. The entire triangle will get new landscaping and irrigation. A new electrical system along with uplighting will be installed. And one thing I realized I was remiss to add to this slide, is the interpretive sign with the narrative from our friends at the Historic Preservation Association, detailing the significance of Des Moines Memorial Drive. This is a slide that I imagine we'll come back to, as this is what has changed from the last time I presented here. So on the left table, you can see that the summation of our costs has gotten to a total of $453,000. That has been updated to include the responsive low bid of $268,000 approximately. And we've also added in the standard 10% construction contingency of $27,000. The, everything you see above construction, so the $53,000 for early procurement on long lead items, the $5,000 for permitting, and the $100,000 for design, are figures that have already been expended. And then the construction and the contingency are what is yet to be spent of that 453. On the right-hand side table, you can see that we have $274,000 of secured bond funds. 163 of that has replaced ARPA money that was previously in this project, which leaves us with $16,000 that has been contributed by Sound Transit, and $163,000 that we will be moving over from park levy funds. And that 163 and the 16 will be part of an upcoming CIP amendment, once this is passed. And luckily, I can do math in my engineering degree, so the two sides match up. We did a public outreach campaign in March of 2024, and got over 120 responses. These three figures are the leading elements that were voted for in each of those categories. So you can see the design of the gateway sign, the finish on the concrete for the plaza, and the plaque, the housing for the plaque and the stone tablet. Also, as part of the public outreach campaign, we asked residents to rank the overarching features of the project and of the triangle. And as a result of this survey, we actually removed the bench seating from the project, over a lot of feedback questioning the use of it, and also citing safety concerns in that area. The current project timeline, so here we are on March 13th. We advertised in February into the beginning of March. As I said earlier, we had our bid opening earlier this week. And if all things go well tonight, we will be proceeding with a contract with our GC tomorrow. I've talked to them, and their tentative schedule has them starting on the 24th of this month. And we have them completing a week before Memorial Day, to be sure that we're in time for a ribbon cutting. That concludes my presentation. I'll now open it up to questions.
All right. Any questions? Councilmember Oxiger?
Yes. It was mentioned previously by the Public Works Director that one of the concerns was the fact the lack of parking, and that there were plans to put, I believe it was up to three additional parking places in a, an adjacent project.
Yes, Councilmember, if you, if you're familiar with the triangle area, there's a crossing that comes from the, from the north. And there is a, we currently have a stormwater project that's, that's cutting through that cul-de-sac. And our thought process was, is we would, we would put a, an ADA parking stall in there to get access across. We don't have a picture of that. But, so there's, there's an ADA, there's a cul-de-sac available across, that we can make additional parking stalls in that cul-de-sac that would support this location.
One?
No, I would put one ADA, and then two, there's already other parking there, but we would probably push out a bulb and do that. But that is not part of this project or this capital dollar.
Well, I understand, I understand that. But, but the amount of money we're investing, investing in the overall project, wouldn't, I think, you know, should include those numbers.
Okay.
So, how, what is the estimated cost for those projects?
I, I don't have that off the top of my head. I could put a number together for you, but the, the stalls we added, say, of Redondo, were about $35,000 to $40,000. So that's, that's just the first part that came to my head when we added the ADA stalls and the, and the asphalt to Redondo.
Okay. Go ahead, take the other question.
All right. I'll, I'll take it. Councilmember Harris, and then Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Thank you. I did not see all of the Transportation Committee meetings, so forgive me if this is, but my understanding is that part of the clog earlier was some issue with WashDOT in not getting any bids. What was the magic to go from zero to six?
The way WashDOT put the restrictions on the traffic control plan, some of the contractors believed that they would have to work nights before blocking traffic. We went back and clarified that language with WashDOT, and then we rebid the project. Basically, they're going to be allowed to, to close the right-hand turn lane when they need to bring in the crane and other items for the, for the flagpole and other issues.
It's always astounding to me how these small things, and, and I'm just, you know, I, I, I get the frowny face or whatever. But since the Des Moines people are here, it would be lovely if you could put on the city website some sort of graphic of the plaque and that sort of thing. If, you know, I understand if it's, you've got something like that, and they're very happy with it, and I'd love for the rest of the public to see it.
Absolutely, we could do that.
Thank you so much, sir.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
If, if I recall, the, the flagpole would need to be replaced under any circumstances. The electrical would need to be replaced under any circumstances. And the irrigation or water in the area would need to be replaced under any circumstances, because they're all old and failing. Is that correct?
Deputy Mayor, yeah, they're all in bad, bad shape. Matter of fact, I worry about that flagpole. I really do.
Thank you.
Councilmember Grace Matsui, and then I'll check with you, Councilmember Nutting, in just a moment.
Could you tell me a little bit more about the park levy funds, and what those, that is the portion that's replacement, that was ARPA funds and now is not? Okay?
Oh, so, Councilmember, that, no. So, when we took the ARPA money out, bond funds were put back in to make that up.
Okay, so in that top line?
They do happen to be the same number, but that's a coincidence.
Okay. Got it, I see that. And so it's the top line, the two. And so it's the top line, the $274,000 that was flipped out?
So the, yes, leaning the right side table. So the 274 in, originally included 111 of bond funds and 163 from ARPA. Once ARPA went away, the separate bonds fronts that are not the park levy were replaced in kind, which still kept us at 274. And then at an earlier time, we were assuming $50,000 from Sound Transit, but that has since been confirmed at 16,000, which is where that number comes from. And then the 163 is just the delta between what we had secured and what the project total, what the projected costs are, which is the 453 all told.
Without the addition of the $120,000 that the three parking spots could cost.
No, so when I gave the number 35 to 40,000 for the parking stalls, it would be for, that would be for all of them.
Oh, really? Okay, that's even better. Yes, so 40,000 for three stalls.
That's what it cost us at, at Redondo.
Got it, sorry, I missed that if you were talking about one or three. What, what? Let me think about this question before I ask it. Someone can go back, thank you.
Sure, Councilmember Nutting, do you have any comments or questions?
Neither, thank you, Mayor.
All right. Well, she's gelling over there. I, my take is I was a little uncomfortable in, in regard to the increase in price. I think originally it was like 175,000, and I, I was, I was uncomfortable. But what I've come to see this as, as a grand monument and entrance to our city, which originally, it was, originally the project was more of a beautification project, but this is, this is a grand monument and memorial, which is the entrance to the historic Des Moines Memorial Highway and, and a beautiful entrance to our city. And, and coupled with the fact that a few elements needed attention or replacement anyway, I'm, I'm much more comfortable when you think about this kind of an entrance to your city and this kind of a monument at the beginning of a memorial highway that honors those who have served our country. Well, I feel good about this, so thank you for your work. So I'll go to Councilmember Mahoney.
Thank you, Mayor. Being a veteran, one of the things was is I served overseas in Germany, and I was able to visit Normandy and Verdun. And it, to see the crosses and so many other memories of, of, of what the sacrifice was there, I can tell you that it moves you in a way that I just can't describe. I was visiting your website today, Wikipedia. A couple of things a lot of people should know is, according to your website, that 877 soldiers from Washington were killed during World War I and that over 3,070 were wounded. Now, Wikipedia says 11, 1100 were killed, and that's why there were 1100 trees planted. I'm not sure that I leave that to you guys for thing. But at the time, our population in 1917, 1918, 1919 was only roughly just over a million people. And this was a huge hit to this area. I have, being a veteran, one of the things you do, and, and Mike knows this too, is you, after you serve, you have just this great respect for those that came before you. You've been put in places at the ends of the world to defend your country, and I think it's important that, that, that we represent it. I agree, one, this is one of our steps in placemaking. It's two, it's a grand entrance, but the most important thing, we're all obligated to, and they named the street after the city of Des Moines. It's important to honor them, and all of them are gone now. I'm sure Wesley and Judson and some of the other places in town, some of their sons and daughters are still here, you know, cherishing the memory. But I'm thrilled that we're here today. It's been a long road, and I'll be supporting this.
So we did kind of enter into discussion before we checked the motion, but what I'd like to do now is take a motion and then open for any other concluding comments or discussion. Did you remember your question there? All right, so I'd like to ta, take a motion? Would you like to take it, Matt? Excuse me, Councilmember Mahoney.
Look, yes, it's okay. Called sergeant one time, too, and other things. So the first motion, I move to approve the public works contract with Tika or Tika Inc. for the Des Moines Memorial Flag Triangle Project in the amount of $268,325. Authorize a project construction contingency in the amount of $26,800. And further authorize the city manager's assign said contract substantially in the form as submitted.
Do I have a second? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz for the second. Any other comments or question, or comments? Thank you, discussion. Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, thank you. Again, I just want to thank the members of the Des Moines Memorial Drive Preservation Association for your patience tonight, first of all, but also for your advocacy over the decades. Very much for hanging in there with this. And livingroadofremembrance.com is the website, and thank you, thank you. Whenever you look at the utility boxes, the elm trees, going, you know, going all the way down into White Center, it's, that's them, and we appreciate it. And, yeah, it's, it's been a long time. Thank you, just not only for the decades, but also for your patience tonight. That's it.
Councilmember Grace Matsui and then Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Thank you. One of the design elements, I just wanted to ask a little bit more about whether or not we would consider saying something like, welcome to downtown Des Moines, because I just want to say that there are so many residents who live north of here that anyone in the rest of North Hill, the city, like if you're, if you are living on 194th, but the welcome sign is a mile and a half south, I just wonder if we would consider that as an acknowledgement that that is actually not really the northern gateway to the city of Des Moines, but it could be considered the northern gateway to downtown Des Moines or the Marine District of Des Moines. And I kind of feel like that's an unintentional, but a little bit of an oversight for a community that when I was out talking to residents during that area, already feel like they're not part of the city. I don't know, that's what I wanted to bring up.
Was that a question or is it input?
I would like to consider possibly changing the language, or just talking about the possible of changing the language.
Thank you. I, I was on the original, early, early stages of the project, so I can talk about the orientation of this gateway sign. So first half, as you know, is Normandy Park, and right on the boundary there. So the orientation is for cars coming down First Avenue, still within Normandy Park, and the gateway sign of Des Moines, and they can either go up Des Moines Memorial Drive, Des Moines, or into our downtown Des Moines. So that was the intent of the welcome to Des Moines at that location and angled to that traffic coming down first.
Right, absolutely.
Just to add a little more context.
Sure, but that line between Des Moines and Normandy Park also goes up and up and up and up. It doesn't just, it's not a point right there, it continues, and they go up, 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 so.
Do you have a clarifying point to that? We have Councilmember, oh, excuse me, go ahead, go ahead.
You know, granted the point, I, I mean, I was a Des Moines North Hill resident, and I know Councilmember Nutting is, and haven't quite felt that way. But I would say the same if you're coming from, if you're on Highway 99 and you're crossing on 216th, there's the welcome to Des Moines, but the Pack Ridge neighborhood is above that. I think the consistency here is about the fact that it's an idea of, it's the only a good legitimate location to provide something like this. And I, I'm not in favor of changing to the downtown. I think, I think as you mentioned, it's diverting and you're still in Des Moines, and I think it's just a messaging. I think overcomplicating it makes it difficult, and it isn't consistent with what we're doing in the rest of the town. That's all.
Councilmember Grace Matsui, just real quick, the gateway sign was already on the advanced purchase, so I don't, we can call and see where they are in construction if we could come up with different language, but that boat may have sailed.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, can you clarify? You mean you've already paid for the sign and this language that says?
It's being, the sign, the metal portions of the sign are being, are being constructed.
Oh, I'm sorry, so although this expenditure hasn't been authorized, that's, this is already being fabricated?
We did, we did the, we did on the upfront order, on the advanced order, we did the flagpoles, the lights, and, and the wording for the signs, because they would take longer to get here.
It's actually the concrete backing.
The concrete backing.
But in order to change it, it would require redesign of-
Sign of the concrete backing.
I think for clarity, they're asking, this is extra money tonight? We did authorize the expenditure for the project with the bond funds? So I think they're, they've started spending that, is that?
I think that's correct, Mayor. I, I mean, yes.
Yeah, the, the motion tonight is for acceptance of the contract-
For the construction.
And then for the amendment of that added amount, which from the park levy funds.
Okay.
Thank you for the clarification, that happened before my time.
Okay, so next up, I have Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, and then I would like to check in with Councilmember Nutting after that.
Yeah, I don't know if you're aware of all the welcome to Des Moines signs that exist. 272 does not have one, although that is clearly a boundary from at Pack Highway into Des Moines, but even putting one there would leave out the Redondo. When I first joined the council, that's one of the things I kind of asked about, was trying to get something up there that said, you know, welcome to Des Moines and make that more inclusive. So we've got issues with where we're placing welcome to Des Moines signs that don't necessarily include parts of, of that. And, and I'm not saying that's a good thing, I'm just saying I, this is how sometimes the cookie crumbles. And, you know, I, you are not alone in recognizing that sometimes that might be an issue, but I hope people don't feel excluded. But I do think the suggestion that this is an ideal placement for that kind of a sign does actually make some sense, and at least it's oriented towards people coming from Normandy Park or taking First Avenue down from the North Hill neighborhood. The, you know, I think that this project has, has been a little frustrating, because we've had to go back and redesign. It, it grew. I think that cost us in inflation, it cost us in time, it cost us in commitment. And, and all along now, we're, we're still have three major pieces of that piece of land that need to be replaced, the flagpole, the electrical, and the water. And that's got to happen. We cannot, we're going to fix those one way or the other. And so I think, you know, for those reasons, this is an important project to get done. I also think that from the point of view of having an entrance to the city that is friendly, welcoming, looking professional, updated, if you will, you know, I, I think that's important. That visual as you come in to the city is a key piece of how we want to keep defining ourselves. And then lastly, I think that it is important to recall why Des Moines Memorial Drive is named Des Moines Memorial Drive. And thank you very much for your advocacy and your patience sitting around here tonight and your patience, you know, and keeping, keeping a little prod to the council to, to get this done. So I, I think all of those reasons, you know, sort of add up to me that I'm going to support moving this forward, accepting the bid. And, you know, I am amazed that the contractor is able to start that soon, but I'm very pleased by that. And we can get, if we can get this project done before Memorial Day and actually have a nice ceremony there, and I hope you will join us for that ceremony. That would be a great thing, so.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm going to check with Councilmember Nutting and then Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Nutting, do you have any comments before we go to the vote? In a minute?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I have a few comments. I mean, as, as the city, the way we are backed up to CTEC, CED, federal way, beer in, in some parts, Normandy Park in other parts. Even Normandy Park put up a sign that said, welcome to Normandy Park, and it, and it's on the entrance or exit to a portion of Des Moines in, in what they call the Mermaid's Dale. We're, we're always going to challenges in the way that we are designed and, and in the area that we are. So I, I, I understand that there's challenges in deciding on what our entrances and what our e-races are and how we define them. But I, I think, I, I think this is a great project to move forward with our, our service members being recognized and, again, the challenges of the electrical and, and irrigation and everything that needs to be replaced in the park. I, I just think it's, it's, we'll move forward with this and move on.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, at the risk of sounding like me, Grant, that's why you have a rendering of the image, and so people don't find, you know, at the last minute. On a, I will get this question. The item mentions landscaping improvements, and so to end on a positive note, we hear about that all the time, about late summer and so on. So if you have anything, you know, uplifting to say about how the green is going to be better going forward, that would be, if not now, just I would encourage you to put that in any kind of materials, because people just, it's every August, they just talk about it and so on and so forth. If, if that can be better, that will be a good feature proposition, too. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Oxiger.
Yes. I continue to have a problem with the functionality of the way this monument is being set up. We've been told it's not a park, you're spending park funds on it, parks levy money on it. And the way it's set up is encouraging people to visit the site physically. And given, you know, what we're putting into this, including the extra $35,000, we're spending close to a half million dollars on a a structure, or I mean, a, you know, a site that I think is going to get extremely little use in context of what the purpose is. The purpose is, I, I have no problem with the purpose. We should be, I have no problem with honoring our veterans or anything like that. But to be spending half a million dollars on a, on a project that basically is going to be inaccessible for the public. I made the mistake previously of, of referring to it as, you know, needing a horizontal design. I should have said, this design is flush, and I think it should be vertical so, so that people driving by would see it. I think it would be much more effective in that case for honoring, honoring our veterans. And, you know, for the amount of money we're expending, we're looking at, we're looking at, you know, some pretty serious problems going forward as far as budgeting. And, you know, the, the public, both last August and, or emphatically again in November, said, you know, you know, we, we can't be spending this kind of money right now. And, you know, I think it's unfortunate timing that, that, you know, we're, we seem to be in a mad rush to get this done by Memorial Day, which is kind of ironic because World War- Which is kind of ironic because World War, and of course, World War One ended, of course, on, on the eleventh of November. So I, I just have real heartburn with the fact that we're expecting the, the impact of this thing is something that is going to need to be appreciated on site. And it's, it's very unlikely that people are gonna be actually doing that. So, you know, I'm sure that, you know, that my vote is gonna be futile. But, you know, unless we design this in such a way that it is more effective for the, for the expenditure and truly does honor our veterans by people being, be able to see this, I'm, I'm not in favor of this.
Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, I, I'm assuming the boat has sailed, as you, you said. But is there a reason that we are, you know, you mentioned those parking spaces. Do they even need to exist?
The question was brought up, Councilmember Harris, that, you know, if someone does want to go visit the park, where would they park? And that came up during one of the, one of the committee meetings, I believe, with Councilmember Oxinger. And so we took a look at that and said, yeah, there is an op, right now in the original project, there was not. So we went out and we looked and we said, yes, there is an opportunity. There's already a cul-de-sac there. But we could add an ADA stall because, you know, a lot of veterans sometimes, if they want to visit or, or older people that might want to visit.
You're talking on the, you're talking on, on the east side of the street, heading north into-
Correct. That there's the cul-de-sac there and that you have, the ability to put access in ADA stall there so that you can come down crossover. Because the other portion of the project, although it's not direct, is the pedestrian crossing of the drive across the triangle into the downtown. So all of that is also being done to make that connection across the street into the downtown through the park.
I'm in this awkward position because I strongly favor the monument, okay? But the idea of encouraging people to park along there and make it more of a, you know, thing, I, I just, my head just, a, a little artery just did something. And if there was a way, I mean, if there was a way to lose those and make it less of a parky kind of a thing. Because every point where we allow people to do those little turn-in things, not great things happen. I think it would be more reverential to keep it as-
And Councilmember Harris, the, those stalls are, are not in this project.
Okay. But so potentially, that's something that could be-
We were asked to take a look at what we could do, and that's what we came up with.
Okay, brilliant. Okay, then I'm, then I, then I'm done. I just-
And I, I do want to clarify, I think he said the east side.
No, it's the north side.
Yeah, you're talking about the cul-de-sac. I think he's talking about the turnout that utility people use.
Oh, no, no.
On the east side.
It would be across the street on the north side. There's a cul-de-sac on six.
So to the northwest of the triangle.
Where the wrapped utility box is. Where the utility wrap is, there's a cul-de-sac right there.
I, I just, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I would not want to encourage, I just-
Just, just for clarity though, that's what he's talking about. So what I would like to do, it sounds like everybody's had a chance to chat about this. I would like to go ahead and take it to a vote. We're still on motion number one that's been seconded. So all in favor, please raise your right hand. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, Councilmember Mahoney, how do you vote? Councilmember Nutting?
In favor, Mayor.
Councilmember Nutting and myself, that's four. All against. Councilmember Oxiger, Councilmember Grace Matsui, and Councilmember Harris against. Motion passes three to four. Okay. Second motion.
I move to direct administration to bring forward a budget amendment to the twenty twenty-five, twenty thirty capital improvements plan and the twenty twenty-five capital budget to include the amended memorial flag triangle project as described herein and include such amendment in the next available budget amendment ordinance.
For the second? Second, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, any discussion? Okay. All in favor, raise your right hand. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, Councilmember Mahoney, how do you vote? Councilmember Nutting?
In favor, Mayor.
Councilmember Nutting and myself in favor, all opposed. Councilmember Oxiger, Councilmember Grace Matsui, and Councilmember Harris opposed. Motion passes three to four. All right. So there we go. I think that item is done and moving forward. Thank you for visiting. Appreciate that. Okay, moving on to formerly, which was item number one. It is consideration to join K-4C. The purpose of this item is for council to consider joining K-4C. We have had a presentation already with opportunity for questions. I would like to open with the motion and then follow that with discussion. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Mahoney.
There it is. I move to authorize the city manager to enter into an interlocal agreement with King County City's collaboration for the city of Des Moines to join this group. They didn't give the specifics, but yeah, that's, that was the motion.
Do I have a second? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz for the second. Discussion. Any raised hands? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz?
Yeah, it just seems to me this is kind of a no-brainer. It's, it's a relatively small amount for access to, you know, some countywide support on a number of projects that are focused on the environment and climate change. And I think this is a good group to be working with. So I, I would support this.
All right. And Councilmember Nutting, any, do you have any comments?
I just kind of echo Deputy Mayor Steinmetz to, not very done, but yeah, it's relatively a little amount of money with a little bit of kick. And yeah, I'd support this.
Excellent. Agreed. Even just checking with staff, they would appreciate that. K-4C as a research, excuse me. Councilmember, uh, Councilmember Grace Matsui.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I wanted to check that it was a year-to-year agreement and annual. It's not like a three-year commitment at this point or anything like that. But it's just a one year. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll double check for further questions. Anyway, agreed. Looks like beneficial staff would appreciate it. So all in favor, raise your right hand. Deputy, how do you vote? How do you vote, Councilmember Nutting?
In favor, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Looks like it's unanimous, seven, zero. Okay. Next item, the Twenty-Fourth Avenue Improvement Project. And I believe we're receiving a, a presentation from Principal Engineer Kyle. The purpose of this item is for council to consider authorization for additional contingency on the Twenty-Fourth Avenue South project.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilmember, and staff. Kyle, Principal Engineer. So tonight, my presentation, my presentation unfortunately not gonna be as cool as the sick-guys shark. But I'm gonna go over a request from, from staff for city council approval to amend the construction contingency of the Twenty-Fourth Avenue South Improvement Project. So the Twenty-Fourth Avenue South Project, this is the segment two, which goes from Candy Moise Road South to South to Twenty-third Street. And the project proposed to expand the roadway to include two-way left-turn land as well as bike land, curb garden sidewalk along both sides of the roadway. And from the planning phase of the project, very early on, I would say that it was identifying that utility conflict was a great challenge. And with that knowledge, staff has been coordinating with all franchise utility on the project very early on to making sure that we identify all of the, the conflict and with the goal to resolve them before the construction begin. But unfortunately, despite our effort, as you all know, during the construction of the Twenty-four Project, we encountered multiple, like, conflict with PSC and other utilities, which lead, led to two different expansion of works and added the construction costs. So for our next few slides here, to provide a better understanding of the history of the conflict with PSC, I would like to walk through the, the coordination timeline with PSC. So before, like, construction, so this, the coordination really goes all the way back to June of twenty, twenty twenty, almost five years ago. We provided PSC with the official utility notification to let them know about the city intend to install the improvement on Twenty-four. And follow, follow that, in March of twenty twenty-one, we have the utility coordination kickoff meeting. So at the meeting, the city provided all franchise utility with the thirty percent of the design plan. And with that plan, we provide utility with the information so that they can identify the potential conflict with their facilities and come up with a plan to relocate them. Between March of twenty twenty-one and July of twenty twenty-two, that's when PSC worked on their power and gas relocation plan and submitted that to, to the city. I'd like to add the note that during that time, PSC assigned four different project manager to their project. And that's really delayed their, the design, the process during that time. So in, in November of twenty twenty-two, the city notified PSC in writing about the project construction schedule. And we requested that they remove all of the conflict with the project by March first of twenty twenty-three. And PSC committed to it. So in June of twenty twenty-three, we advertised the project a little bit. So during the construction, in July of twenty twenty-three, we had our, uh, pre-construction meeting. So at the meeting, we invited all franchise utilities. And PSC at the meeting notified us that they had all of their gas relocation done as well as the distribution pole relocation done. And you often see that on a, a utility pole, the power line is usually located on the top level and below that's your communication line. So when PSC say that they are completed with the distribution pole, it's, which mean that they installed a new pole, right? And then they transfer over their power line to the, to the other pole. But all that they done is that they just cut off the top of, of the pole. And communication just still intact and in conflict. Because PSC, PSC couldn't like remove like those pole at, at that time. And they also notify us that the transmission poles, which is located between two Twenty-third and two, and, and two Twenty-fourth, was the delay. The delivery of that was the delay. And they promised that, that, that will be done by the end of October of twenty twenty, twenty-three. So we, we've been working with PSC and the contractor was trying to find efficiency where, like, where they can, trying to work around the conflict. But when it comes to March of twenty twenty-four, we had to go into expansion of work. The contractor ran out of work like to do. In March thirteen of twenty twenty-four, PSC notified the city that finally all of their relocation work is completed. However, at that time, like, as I explained, the communication lines are still intact on PSC pole. So the poles are still in, in conflict. In June of twenty, twenty, twenty twenty-four, that's when we finally got everything done from all franchise utility. So we directed the contractor to go back to work. One week later, contractor came back to us and notifying the city that they identified more conflict with gas services from PSC. So we, we stopped being working with PSC and contractor trying to, you know, the same thing, trying to work around the conflict, do what we can. But then we have to go into another expansion of work in October of twenty twenty-four. So here's a, here's a breakdown. Because of all of those utility conflict with PSC is created significantly delayed to the project and added the construction costs to the, to the project. And before I go over these, these costs, I, I would like to say that all of these costs was proposed by the contractor. But city staff and the construction management team reviewed all of these costs and negotiated them to make sure that we have a really good understanding of these costs. And we only pay what is reasonable. So the first cause, this expansion of work, number one, is including total cost of daily overhead, labor support, standby equipment and material. The total cost of that was around hundred and thirty, and thirty-five thousand dollars. Second item, utility impact prior to the expansion of work. Number one, including costs for loss of the production and delay due to the conflict between the overhead utility and storm waters and water main work. Utility pack, sorry, utility impacts between the first and the second expansion of work. Items include the cost for loss of production and delay due to the conflict with PSC gas line and, and overhead utility. And the cost for that was calculated to be around three hundred thousand dollars. So during the second expansion of work, the city staff coordinated with contractor to install a temporary, a temporary asphalt layer to make sure that we increase public safety as well as allow access to nearby churches and school. And the cost for, for that work was around hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. The, similar to the first expansion of work, the expansion of work number two, the second expansion of work cost was the total cost for daily overhead, labor support, standby, eh, eh, equipment for the contractor to maintain the travelway for vehicle and pedestrian. And the total cost of that was around sixty-five thousand dollars. And since the project has been extended over a year, the contractor also filed a claim for the inflation. They, they have increased in labor rate and cost for all of the, the remaining work in the project that hasn't been done yet. So we have increased cost for equipment and the material. And the estimate cost for that was around hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Because of the extended length of the project, there are project management costs that's include internal and external engineering, construction management, and inspection. The total cost of, for that, for those item was around two hundred and forty thousand dollars. And to build the project improvement, temporary construction easement was required. And the original TCE that was acquired for, for the project was set to be expired by the end of March of this year. Because of that, we have to go out and extend those, the TCE for another year to allow the contractor to go back to work. And the cost for those TCE extension and the right-of-way consultant, the support to get that done was around hundred thousand dollars. And the last item was a conflict with other franchise utility. And that cost was estimated to be around forty thousand dollars. So the tot, the total cost due to PSC conflict was around one point two million dollars, the total. So, so fast, looking forward, we, not on wood, but we, 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 we got, we recently received a notification from PSC that they finally done again with all of the, the relocation work. They fixed all of the gas services that was in the conflict. So we are clear to get back to work. So the contractor will resume construction on March twenty-four. And we targeted to- So the contractor will resume construction on March 24, and we targeted to get all of the paving work done, hopefully before the first day of school, with the substantial completion status of the project by the end of October of this year. Uh, Dr. May wanna, yeah, talk about that?
So this is kind of where I came in into the project. And so we noticed right away that these delays were driven by our utility partner through the franchise agreement. We have ways to rectify this. So we notified them that we would be doing a reimbursement request. Then they had 30 days to notify us back to set up a meeting. And so in December, we started, we had our first meeting with them on how we were going to rectify these costs with PSC. Now, there's a flip side of that, because we're requesting additional dollars today because we need this contract to go forward, approximately $1.2 million. And we'll be taking that out of the transportation funds to complete this project while we go to recover the additional funds from PSC. So, but right now, we've sat down and negotiated with PSC. They are aware of these, these, these costs, the costs that I just shared with you, and that that's the level where our claim is going to be. And then we've reached as far as we can, according, as far as I've been able to reach with, with PSC with regards to, the franchise agreement starts with, at my level and a person at PSC at their level. And so we've gotten to this point where all the information is gathered. They understand what our claim is, they see what our claim is, and how we came to those numbers. And so now we're going to make the claim. And the city manager has been in contact with the next level up, the Government Relations Group. And we've also been in discussions, of course, with the city attorney about what the next steps are, if we, on how we would file a claim and negotiate a settlement to this or litigate it if need be. So that's kind of where we're at. But, so the ask for the additional contingency today is to finish the project while we go to recoup those funds, whether it be through a settlement, an arbitration, or litigation. I don't know which one it's going to be yet, so.
Okay, so we're ready for, all right, so ready for questions? I'm not, since I've been looking this way, I wasn't sure who was first. So Councilmember Oxiger, and then Councilmember Nutting, I heard you there. You have a question in a moment?
Thank you.
All right.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Can you tell us what the original cost of this project was before?
Yeah, the, the original cost for the project is $7.2 million.
Okay, and also, you mentioned the problem with the Puget Power, Puget Sound Energy, about the responsibility for moving the other utilities. Was that something they were supposed to arrange, or was it something we were supposed to arrange?
It's their poles, they should be contacting them to move those pole, those lines.
Okay, so, so they neglected to contact?
Well, they did, but they couldn't move, they didn't, they didn't have their poles moved to the other side. It was, yeah, it was a very arduous tale. There's a lot, there's a lot that will come out. I don't want to litigate it here in front of you right now. But there's, there's a lot of documentation we have on, on, on how this project should have gone forward and the amount of, of advance notice and everything else that we gave PSC.
Okay.
I can answer the one thing.
Oh, just really quick, we, we need to extend the meeting. So I'm, I'm looking at if we want to eliminate our council member reports, I think we could probably get this done in the next 10 minutes, probably even faster than that, but let's say 10 minutes. Are you in favor of eliminating our council member reports? Okay, looks like we have a nod there.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Nutting, so, do I, yes, a motion to extend.
I move to move, to extend the meeting to nine, 10.
Do I have a second? Second with Deputy Mayor Steinmetz. All in, any, all in favor?
In favor.
In favor, okay. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, Councilmember Oxiger, Councilmember Grace Matsui, Councilmember Mahoney, Councilmember Nutting and myself in favor, all opposed. Councilmember Harris opposed, motion passes six-one. Go ahead. Kai, I think you would be.
I think it's just, I just mentioned with Kai, I think that's a level of detail that's probably not better discussing here while we, while we go forward. Because if, I don't want to discuss anything that may be called in a litigation here.
Okay. So now back to the order of, I think, Councilmember Nutting, I heard you, clear your voice. Did you have a question here?
I do, I have a couple, I have a couple questions. I guess my challenge with accepting this to raise the dollar value is, is it's not on PSC to contact other vendors than attached to their poles. They, they own the top portion of their poles, and if they have moved their power lines and cut the top of their poles, it's on the other utilities to move them, namely Xfinity or several other quests. But that's typically on the contractor that is doing the work to make sure that they're in contact with those utilities to move those, those utilities. So I guess my heartburn with this whole thing is that we should be backcharging the contractor that has done the work. If that's us, then it's on us, it's our onus to be contacting these other utilities to move their, their lines off of these poles so they can be moved. And the only reason why I know this wholeheartedly for the front of this is because I'm going through the same thing in another jurisdiction. So I have a challenge of adding $2 million to this when somebody should have been in the forefront of this and moving it forward. It's, it's really not on PSC. They only own the top of the pole where their transmission lines are, and then everybody else pays them to attach to their pole. So, I don't know, I'd like some questions answered of who was contacting who and why they thought PSC should have been the one contacting, let's just say, Xfinity, Zipley, any of the fiber people on the market that possibly could have been attached to their pole. That's, that's my only comment. Mayor, thank you.
And Councilmember, Councilmember Nutting, I will be glad to go through all of those with you, with the project team, because the contacts were made appropriately, and I just don't want to go through the litigation in an open forum right now.
And, and that's fine, thank you. I'd love a sidebar, because I'm really concerned about the way it possibly was handled and possibly could be handled in the future, moving down the road.
Understood.
Okay, Councilmember Harris.
I got very little, well, actually, I got about half an hour. And I'll just say that this is, it is disrespectful, with all due respect to our fishy friends out there, it is disrespectful to the public to compress this discussion into 12 minutes. And if I were parents or people who lived along 24th Avenue, I would be absolutely livid. And as a boss of mine once said, "I don't care whose fault it is, it's your fault, mate." And I just really feel I, that I just, we should just have some kind of contrition or whatever, that is not to say any of you or whatever, but this is something that people have a right to be, to just really bleed about a little bit, and that's it. I will have some questions for you all, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Boy, this must be incredibly frustrating for you. I know that the people on 24th who have to drop their kids off at school are incredibly frustrated that this project has taken so long to get done. And that's the reason I'm going to support this motion, is it's got to get done.
I would think.
It just, you know, this is a safety issue for the kids that are walking to school. This is a, you know, huge inconvenience for people that are trying to drive their kids there. There's a, you know, Highline is going to be working on Pacific Middle School, replacing it very soon. We've got to get this project done. We'll hash out who's at fault, pointing fingers if that's what people want to do, but it's got to get done. And, and I'm going to support the motion.
All right, any other, any other questions before the motion? Councilmember Mahoney?
Questions. Your major, your first priority is for the safety of their children, correct?
The, the first priority of the Pollo Works Department right now is to close up this road, make it safe, and to coordinate with the Highline School District so that they can complete their project.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Councilmember Harris.
I'm just hopeful that we can do some kind of lessons learned on this. You have to hedge if they're not reliable partners, if, whatever the deal is, if it's solar radiation, this kind of thing, I'm just, it just cannot be something that we do not have any defense against in the future. Thank you.
Any other, pardon, any other questions before the motion? Councilmember Nutting, any other questions before the motion? No, okay. Councilmember Mahoney, since you're Chair of Transportation, would you like to take the motion?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to increase the project construction contingency for the 24th Ave. South Improvement Project in the amount of $1,185,080, bringing the total project construction contingency to $1,887,080.
Do I have a second? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz for the second. Any discussion? Councilmember Oxiger.
I just want to confirm that the money is going to be taken out of the overlay program we had for next year.
That is correct. That's, that's the money we targeted to utilize to cover this deficit, yes.
Okay, so, and then the, what the intention is, is that we eventually recover that money, but there's going to be a delay in the overlay project?
Correct. The money that we receive from recovery from PSC would go right back to replace those funds, correct?
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Nutting. Did you, Councilmember Nutting, did you raise your hand? He, he did. Where I saw him raise his hand. Okay. Any more discussion before we take it to a vote? All right, all in favor of motion number one, raise your right hand. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, Councilmember Nutting, how do you vote? No, okay. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, Councilmember Oxiger, Councilmember Grace Matsui, Councilmember Mahoney, Councilmember Harris and myself, all opposed. Councilmember Nutting, are you, okay, Councilmember Nutting is opposed. Motion passes six-one. Councilmember Mahoney for the motion.
I move to direct administration to bring forward a budget amendment in the 2025 through 2030 Capital Improvement Plan and the 2025 Capital Budget to include the amended 24th Ave. South Improvement Project as described herein, and include such amendment in the next available budget amendment ordinance.
Did you want to make the second, Councilmember Nutting? I'm wondering if he's got a huge delay. Oh, you know what? Am I? Okay, one moment. Can you help me with phone number again? Two zero six nine four seven? Zero five zero nine?
Zero six zero. Hold on, let me look it up for you.
Okay. It's like two zero six nine four seven oh five oh six or something.
All right, nine four seven, two zero six.
Two zero six.
Nine four seven, zero six zero nine.
That's what he was raising his hand about. Can you hear me?
Hey there.
Hey there, okay, we lost you for a minute. Sorry, I saw you raising your hand and then didn't hear anything.
Yeah, I did, I did not oppose that vote, and I will second the next motion, so.
Okay, good, so seven-zero on that one. Thank you.
Yeah, seven-zero on the last vote, my apologies.
And then you want to make the second on motion number two?
Correct.
And, oh, we are, just seconds from the end of the meeting, all in favor, raise your right hand. Are you raising your right hand, Councilmember Nutting?
Correct, I'm in favor.
Passes seven-zero, and I am going to, there's no, there's no agenda, okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn Council, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz? So do I have a second? Second, Councilmember Mahoney, all in favor, raise your right hand. Looks like seven-zero.
Thank you, Mayor, I apologize.
Yeah, no worries, that just, it happens. Thank you for joining us, appreciate it. Thank you for your comments. All right. You too.